Good morning. I'd like to welcome you to your boardroom. Today is March 15th and this is Ventura County Board of Supervisors meeting. And we will start with our call to order with a roll call. Madam Clerk.
Supervisor Bennett.
Yes.
Supervisor Parks.
Supervisor Michael.
Here.
Supervisor Quinn.
And Supervisor Long.
Here, thank you. And now I'd like to invite up Chaplain Bob Stockman of the Ventura County Sheriff's Department for a moment of affirmation.
I'd like to thank the board for requesting my presence. I'd like to open a prayer. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the time and for your words. We speak in the choices we make according to your will. But if you give us direction, we will go to those ones which are direction by us and the precious sons of your name. In Joshua 24:14, Joshua had to bring assembly together because they were renewing covenant checkup. He told them to choose this day whom they would serve, whether it be God's, their forefathers across the river, or God himself. He brought them a choice, not a command. As you are here today, as the audience behind me is here today, it's a choice he wants to make to bring him toward you. I ask that the guidance is from God. The heart is directly from him, by us and the sons of his name.
Supervisor Bennett. Can do for hearts, ready, begin.
I pray that these are the right of the United States of America, and we are a one nation under God, indivisible, with every being and everything.
There's been a motion of second to accept the minutes of the meeting of Tuesday, March 8th. Any objection to that? Seeing none, so ordered. Good morning, Mr. Johnson, our CEO. We're going to have an agenda review at this time.
Okay, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. There are three, actually four. Item number 26 has been removed from the agenda.
26?
Yeah.
Pardon me? Item 26 been removed?
Okay, there is a request from the city manager of the city of Ojai asking that item 27 be postponed. Just for your information. Item 29, signed agreement has been received. And on item 30, there's a revised resolution.
Item 30, there's a revised resolution?
31.
31, right. Thank you. Other agenda review questions?
Question for Mr. Johnson. You recommending on item 27 delaying it?
No, this is point, I think we need some discussion and some advice from county council. And I think there's some people that are probably here today that's.
So you don't recommend?
No, I just, I suggest for information.
Okay, great, all right.
Other questions regarding agenda? Yes, to the budget part?
I did have a question on 14 and 16.
On the consent, you'd like all those for discussion?
Yes.
Okay. 14 and 16. I would like to ask under agenda review if we could move item 31 up so that it could be heard following the board comment. And also we will need to go to closed session before 9:30 this morning.
Before 9:30?
Before 9:30. Well, before we start at 9:30, yes.
Okay.
Which was that?
I'm sorry. The closed session. We need to, we need to handle one item that's in closed session by 9:30. So under consent, so that's our agenda review and is agreement on those recommended?
I just want to be, want to be clear. So we're pulling 26 from the agenda.
Yes.
And we're moving 31 up, but we're not pulling 27 from the agenda. All right, so make that.
That's correct.
Okay, so I'll make that the motion.
Okay, that's a motion. Second?
30, may I ask a question about 30? You're moving it up to when?
Item 31.
31, okay.
We're moving up to right following board comment.
Second.
Motion and second, any objection? Seeing none, so ordered. Then on the consent agenda, there's been a request to have a discussion of 14 and 16. Any other requests for discussions on the consent agenda? Okay, shall we move the item and then discuss those?
Okay.
Amended, sorry. Motion of second, any objection to that motion? Hearing none? Okay, so ordered. Then let's hear item 14 and 16. Supervisor Parks.
Thank you. And it may be that I can't get these answered immediately. I don't see the staff in here and I apologize for not giving advance warning. But looking through the item 14 is regarding a consulting service contract. And the question that I had on it, it talks about a cost of preliminary design and final design. It doesn't say how much we're looking at for a construction project, so I'm interested in that. I also note that preliminary, I've seen in one of these reports, that preliminary cost estimates, they say it's relating to the January storm. So the deficit is projected, I think in this zone. And I imagine probably the million or so for Laying Dam might be a part of that too. But I would like a little further information about how to handle that kind of thing. And I brought that up before, when Watershed Protection District has one zone that has a deficit. So those are my primary questions on this one here. I just want to know about the total construction cost. I also know that instead of going to a bid for this specific project, we're going to look at a prior project that we didn't end up going to construction with. That was Tierra Hada at Spring and just using those bids. And I just want to make sure that that is sufficiently meets the requirements for going to bid. So had some questions on that one and perhaps we can delay that till later today. Oh, it's, okay, can you answer those questions? That's great, thank you.
Good morning. For the record, my name is Peter Shadey. I'm deputy director of design and construction. I'm filling in for Jeff this morning. The construction cost is estimated at this time to be $3 million for the project. The agreement before you is for the design portion of that project and more specifically the preliminary design of the project. The project did have some planning effort by in-house staff a number of years ago, but it was felt due to some newer information that maybe we need to take a step back and look once more, make sure that we have the alternatives correctly. And will be, part of this analysis will be comparing a number of alternatives that will be used for the environmental permitting and the secret documentation.
And so based on what those alternatives, we'll have a better idea what the actual construction costs will be, I would imagine, or closer?
Correct. And we also will have a better idea what it will cost to prepare final design plan. So that's why we're just bringing this phase one first to you.
Okay.
So that at that point then the consultant will be able to more accurately propose costs for that.
And I don't doubt the need for the project. It's just when we see a report and we're talking about designs and I haven't seen this project before, it's nice to know what we're talking about in the scope of the project. And I didn't see much on that. What about the issue of both the competitive bidding as well as the idea of, I guess, what was the other one?
Well, this is not a construction contract, so it's not a competitive bid process. We use the qualifications-based selection process for professional services. So in this case, what we drew from was, as you might know, the process selecting a consultant, you know, requesting statement of qualifications, going through proposal phase, having interviews, is going to be quite lengthy.
So that that doesn't require going to bid then?
No, it's not.
Okay, then I'm satisfied with that. And then just the last question I had is, have we had an instance before when we have a zone that goes into a deficit and how do we remedy that?
Well, that's, that may be something for the auditor to discuss, but I know that in this case, when we have emergencies that come obviously mid-year and our budgets haven't accounted for the total amount, then we have to, you know, withdraw more money. And I'm afraid I'm not the best one to ask about those issues.
Are you prepared to answer that?
I can bring information back to the board on reserves and designations in the fund as well as, I'm sure the CEO will be working with Public Works at other projects that may be delayed to next year.
And again, I think, well, it says it's because it's storm-related. I would imagine, like I said, paying over a million dollars just to fight a lawsuit on Laying Dam has to hurt that particular zone's finances. And what happens? Would there be a requirement down the line to add, you know, an assessment to that area because of that? Or shouldn't this be something that's handled countywide and can money go between zones? So all those kinds of questions. I would like to get the information in advance of a recommendation for some kind of funding source. I'd like to see what the situation is and how, what are the options for remedying it?
I'll take those questions back to Jeff. I know that that paragraph was inserted specifically due to the emergency.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the answers and sorry to cut you off guard. I needed to know that.
Supervisor Long. I have a question before, if I might.
Supervisor Michael.
On page one of Exhibit A in our staff report, it says the original target estimate for construction of the project is $2 million. Can you tell me why you're now thinking it's going to be close to three? It's under the scope of work and services?
Well, I guess I was looking at different documents. I have three. I have approval of the contract and it has a $3 million price tag. The $2 million probably was a very early estimate. And at this point, as I said, without an alternative analysis, really costing out at a preliminary level what we'll be doing, it's very difficult to say. You know, it's in the range of about 2,000 feet. A lot of times people use $1,000 preliminary foot, but that's very, very rough. So it's.
Okay, but is it the storm damage, do you believe, that would kick it into this alternative mode where it could go as much as a million dollar higher than the original scope and work estimate?
No, I think it's more related to just increased construction costs over time.
Okay.
This is a project that's been on the books for a number of years and that's why we're going out to consultants to design it because we just plainly don't have the staff.
Right, and I understand that part. Has the scope of work changed or will, do you believe it will change from what is in Exhibit A? Which is scope of work and services, South Branch, Arroyo Canyon, downstream of Wendy Drive, phase one.
Well, the scope in the phase one is just for consultant services. It doesn't have any construction.
Right, right, right. But there's no more, you believe, that'll be added to the scope of what the consultant's going to do?
Not for phase one. We will come back to the board for phase two, which will be the final design plan, specifications for whatever improvements that will be recommended.
You ultimately, right, okay.
Likewise, it'll also be an EIR as part of that selection of proposal.
Yeah, I was just a little disconcerted because I was about to tell Supervisor Parks, hey, it's in here. And then you said it was a million dollars, millions, and it's in here. And I'm going, oops. That's not a good thing.
I apologize. Those inconsistencies shouldn't be in these documents.
Okay. Well, and maybe in the answer back to Supervisor Parks, you could get an answer as to why there was an inconsistency. Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Supervisor Parks. I have one more, a small one. I did see the original target estimate was $2 million, but apparently you said this was going on for several years.
Yeah, well, I have conflicting documents here and that's the problem.
Well, thank you for getting us that answer too. It's an important one. It's an important one. I just note also, as I recall, there is a large development of a couple hundred homes that is in a, what is now a wetland. And I know there's a big issue about, the flood control hasn't eased over the entire land. It's right along the 101. You might be familiar with it. And I'm wondering if this project will be done in conjunction with this new development proposal. So, that you can get back to us on, too, if you'd like. Thank you.
Thanks.
And you had questions on sixteen?
Sixteen is just a, maybe it would be more of a suggestion unless there is a response. And this is a wonderful grant for GIS integration with NOAA in regards to our environmental impact biological assessments that we're looking at to look at biologically sensitive areas. And the question I have, we're looking at using this information to update our sensitive resource maps, and we did get, the board did give approval for a natural resource conservation overlay zone. And I was just hoping that this kind of information, since you're going to be applying it to land use and maps, can also go that next step for going towards that overlay zone on the public lands. And I see a nod. So, that's it for that comment, and I'll move approval of both fourteen and sixteen.
I'll second that with a comment. If I'm, oh, I'm sorry. Did you have a?
There's a motion and second to the comment.
Yeah. Just a quick comment in follow-up on sixteen. The Kage District Watershed Planning Area has done, what do we call it? Watershed Management Planning Committee has done an awful lot of good work already, and it has been paid for with federal dollars, at least for that watershed. So, I hope whoever is applying for this grant, and you're all shaking your head, you're going to make sure that we don't duplicate anything that already exists, because those were paid for with federal dollars, and they exist on the website. And it's all, you know, top drawer-type information on species and habitat and sensitive areas, et cetera. So, that's just the comment.
Motion and second. Any objection to the motion? Seeing none, so ordered. Thank you. Good discussion. Okay. At this time, we will move to public comments, and I have three cards submitted under public comment, and I would invite up Rex Flair.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Rex Flair, Ventura County Farm Bureau. On March seventeenth, this coming Thursday, Jeff Van Avery of the assessor's office, excuse me, will retire after twenty-seven years of service to the county of Ventura. We understand and respect the policy and protocol for presentations to retirees before this body. However, Jeff's retirement after thirteen years as a manager of the Rural and Special Properties Division is justification for a few minutes of reflection on this county's leadership in the preservation of agricultural land and open space to the advocacy of the Land Conservation Act. It's not our intent to attempt to do justice to the long history in this county and the performance of the planning department, the assessor's office, local landowners in your board in a time allotted. However, it's fitting and proper to note a few highlights of the county's leadership in this issue. With the exception of Supervisor Flynn, this board has not had the personal opportunity to witness some of the achievements of this county through the LCA program. Passage of Proposition thirteen in the late nineteen seventies had a dramatic impact on a number of issues. One impact was it threatened the continued viability of the LCA program. It was this county that generated the legislation to ensure that the LCA program would still be a viable preservation tool. The original language was drafted by local landowners and the assessor's office. The resulting legislation was carried by our local assembly member with the support of this board. Additionally, this board has faithfully supported the LCA program even when subvention money from the state of California was not sufficient to cover all the lost revenue resulting from your board's commitment to the Williamson Act. More recently, at the request of Supervisor Michaels, the Act Policy Advisory Committee was reconfigured with staff support from the Act Commissioner's Office. This board member committee provides valuable oversight and counsel to your board on new LCA contracts and other agriculturally-related issues. This committee, made up exclusively of industry people, gives valuable credibility to the LCA program. Our purpose this morning is to call attention to an issue that is easy to overlook in the hectic and intensely focused context of our everyday lives. On Thursday, Farm Bureau will join others in honoring Jeff for his service. Today, we are using this forum to say thank you to the assessor's office, to the planning department, local landowners, and especially your board for the long-term collective commitment to the preservation of farmland and open space. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Your comments are appreciated. Thank you. Now, I'd like to invite up Juvenile Hall. I'm sorry, Juvenile Hall. I'm sorry. I need stronger glasses, obviously. Martha Lansford, how about Juvenile Hall? I'm so sorry, Ms. Lansford.
I have to tell you I'm nervous.
Oh, no. You're welcome. You're welcome. Please, don't be.
I have to tell you about the juvenile facilities on Vineyard.
Could you pull the mic down a little bit, too? There you go.
I have to tell you about the juvenile facilities on Vineyard. The staff, they're wonderful. They're doing such a great job. I believe if my granddaughter hadn't been sent there, she would have surely wound up dead. From running away and running with the wrong people and doing the wrong thing. You have a staff out there that's just remarkable. The kids come first. They're always polite. They're always absolute, but they're always nuts. Their rules, they expect them to follow. Maybe "expect" isn't a strong enough word, but there definitely are rules they have to adhere to. They're just doing a remarkable job. And I'm so glad for that facility.
In our first road ahead conference. Currently in existence. First, we'll have a population of over a million people by the year 2020. That's fifteen, twenty-five percent increase in twenty-five years. Second, there's significant transportation problems. There's little likelihood of money from the state or the local taxpayers. Third, land use plans have distortions. We have five times the amount of commercial industrial land that we do reserve for residential. Fourth, the housing stock is not set up to meet the expected demand. Housing, multiple family and condominiums to meet the needs of our young families that are coming up, the workers and our aging members of our population. And lastly, the housing that we do have is out of reach of most in the county. Four to five folks cannot afford to buy a home. A yearly income of in excess of a hundred thousand dollars is required, which is difficult in an area where one out of three jobs pay ten dollars an hour. So, those are the five points we talked about, and we've been engaging the community relative to those points over the last year. What does this tell us about our future quality of life? There's going to be more of us sitting in traffic longer, trying to get to jobs that are further away. Children and grandchildren are going to be leaving the county and have been leaving the county in areas of a better life where they can afford to live. And there's a growing disparity between the poor and the wealthiest in our communities. Civic Alliance says this is simply not good enough to have these situations where they are right now. We can sit back and become Santa Barbara Light, or we can engage and look toward a better future. And that's what this conference on the twenty-fourth is all about. First, and there's four things we're going to spend some time talking about, just as an insight as to what those might be. First, talking about a common vision, goals, principles, that we want, what we want Ventura County to be. We need a strategy to provide political civic leadership to work together for this common vision, make it a reality. We're going to call this the Compact. Secondly, we already know that livable communities is a goal that's worth pursuing, and we can develop strategies now in each of the communities. In fact, some of our communities are already doing a wonderful job hitting in this direction that encourage mixed-use neighborhoods near transportation links that allow for the residents of all income levels, ages, and family structures to live together. And thirdly, we need a long-term development of jobs in the county, and the housing that matches those jobs, that suit, you know, the jobs suit the county, and the housing suits the people who have these jobs. And then finally, we need to prepare Ventura County workforce to compete in the knowledge-based economy. Strategies needed to showcase educational programs that work and encourages those who want to work in Ventura County to be able to have a job in Ventura County. So, at the, March twenty-fourth conference, we'll be discussing these strategies in greater detail. We'll also have experts from around the state in terms of talking about what has worked in other regions. TOT will be talking with local elected officials about what is needed for success to bring some of those successes here to Ventura County. And the idea, again, is to bring to a more sustainable, long-term future. So, I invite each of you to participate, you know, in this particular conference. There's a flyer that has been passed out to you, and there's also a website for registration and more information. That's www.venturacountystar.com/roadahead. I'd like to thank you very much for your time and attention. I look forward to seeing you on the twenty-fourth, and also look forward to further discussing detail with you in individual meetings that have been scheduled, and also receiving some feedback relative to the work that we've done to date and that we're planning on doing. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Supervisor Bennett?
Could you do me a favor and read that third item again in terms of solutions? It's on your second to last.
The third item. Encourage long-term development of jobs in Ventura County that will meet the needs of communities and develop the housing needed to support local jobs. It's the jobs-housing balance. If we could...
Well, we thank you for bringing, Supervisor Parks?
Thank you. And that is a really great suggestion, and each city should know what their job-housing balance is as they go and approve. And the idea of actually having the types of housing to meet the types of jobs in the community is also excellent refinement of that. I noted, you mentioned that there is five times more commercial-industrial zoning out there than there is residential that's available. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And is that throughout the entire county of Ventura? That figure was gathered?
It varies from, from community to community, but yes, on average, that's what the total county looks like, yes.
I hadn't heard that figure before.
Right.
Thank you.
Supervisor Flynn? Yes. Let me congratulate the group on bringing these issues about and defining them as you have. I know this will be discussed at the meeting on the twenty-fourth, but the cost of housing is almost most approached a level where so many people can't afford it. And then, how are we going to work in Ventura County if we completely price people out of living here and working here? That's an issue I hope that we can, we can work on. We're working on farmworker housing right now. And it's so difficult to find land, and so difficult to put something in place. We're moving, but it's moving slowly.
The pricing issue may be the more, most difficult one, but I think one of the solutions lie in the mixed use and the ability to have different levels of housing in the community as opposed to the single-family home that we're building right now that we're asking people to buy.
Thank you. We look forward to the conference, and we're happy you retired from Procter &amp; Gamble so you could take a leadership role in this.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mr. Asko. Thank you. That concludes, yeah, many others. That concludes the public comment time. At this time, we have board comments, and what end do I go on here? I think it's down to Supervisor Parks.
Thank you. I don't have any comments, except to, I do want to extend my thank you. We're going to be having a public safety forum out in Oak Park, and a lot of the different agencies out there that provide public safety will be showing up for a town hall meeting, and I want to extend my thank you to the agencies, including the CHP that's participating. And I would also ask that the board close in honor of the people on this list. And also, I know that we are televised in District Two, the Board of Supervisors meeting, and it's, we use the same cameras that we use for video streaming onto the, onto our web page. People can see our board meetings live on the web and go back and look at archives of previous board meetings. And it would be nice to get some better quality cameras. So, that's a goal of mine. I realize we are cash-strapped, but people out there are commenting on, it doesn't look as good as it could, because they're not really television cameras. So, I just put that out there.
Supervisor Flynn?
Excuse me. I have no comments, except we've got plenty to comment on through the agenda today.
Yes, we do. Supervisor Bennett?
I'd like to ask the board to adjourn in memory of the people on this list. Thank you.
Supervisor Michaels?
Yes, and I would ask that the board adjourn in memory of the individuals on this list. They will be sorely missed. And just a quick comment, hopefully to stop a whole bunch of questions and unneeded sympathy. My arm is fine. It's my hand. I had surgery for a bad thumb joint. The surgery went extremely well. I will be, you know, kind of truly right-winged for a few weeks, but I expect a full recovery. And to all of those who called and sent notes and all of those things, thank you very, very much. I really appreciated your kind thoughts, but this is not a permanent disability, and I'm grateful that it got taken care of simply, quickly, and will be over in about six weeks. So, thank you all again. For those of you who sent emails and cards and all of that, greatly appreciated.
Here, here.
Madam Chair, I neglected to ask the board to adjourn in memory of the people on the list.
Okay. Thank you. I, too, have a list to submit, just one name on it. Marvin Joe Stelling, who I'd like to call out briefly. He was a member of our Aviation Advisory Commission for a period of time. He was, had a career in the naval ship missile systems engineering station in Port Wayne Amy, a published author, and just a well-loved individual in the Camero community. Okay. That concludes the board comments. Yes, sir?
I just received a note here that says that the City of Oxnard requests that item thirty be continued. No one is in the city from, they're all in DC, at some city meeting or mayor's meeting. Yeah. So, that's a request.
So, noted. Thank you. I'd like to move at this time to, at the board's support, to hear item thirty-one, which is an item that I brought forward. Are there public comment cards on that, Madam Clerk? And if I might, once I turn the page to the item. I'm bringing this to the board because of legislation, frankly, that was enacted that allowed for resolution to be brought to the local jurisdictions, government jurisdictions regarding unification requests at the local level. And as my letter starts out, it says that there is a state master plan that's been adopted that really does call for unification of school districts where appropriate and where it meets all the nine criteria established under the State Education Code. it meets all the nine criteria established under the State Education Code. And I'm bringing this forward because there has been a unification effort underway in the Pleasant Valley School District with the Oxnard Union School District to do the analysis and bring forward to what would be a vote of the public, a unification request. And that effort has been underway now since 2000, boy, I need to put my glasses on. 2000, started in 2002. Lots of work done on this and the focus again has been for self-determination, for local control over issues important to the parents and the students and the administration of the districts that are proposed to have unification take place. And with the enactment of AB 780, again, it brings it, it allows it to be brought back to the County Committee on School District Organization and allows for public hearings, public, further public review, for all of the questions to be answered, and then most importantly, to get it to a vote of the people who are very interested in the future for the schoolchildren of the community. This resolution, it does not, and I'd like to make this very clear, it does not require the board to take a position in support or opposition to the unification proposal. It merely allows for a statement to be made that this should be decided at the local level, should be brought back to the local level for full completion of studies and answer of questions and to get it to a vote of the impacted communities that have an interest in unification. I have provided a resolution that, for the board's adoption on this, and I need to hand out a revision to that resolution, a revision to the revision. One, because there was a code in the resolution I prepared that was incorrect. Education Code Section 35-800 is a correct code and I've underlined it in your copy so it's clear. And then caught just this morning in one of the wherewithals, talked about the law being signed into effect for CogDIL on January 1st, 1005. That might be as long as the, unification's been on the agenda to be discussed, but that was just a typo error and apologize for that. But the resolution again does two things. It says, bring this back to the local level for the County Reorganization Committee, bring it back for reviews and studies and to call the question and get it to a vote of the residents within the districts to be, to be proposed for unification. It also does call out, and I'm going to say this right up front, that the question be submitted to the voters of such other districts or areas that choose to be included in the unified district or upon whom the Ventura County Committee determines that the unique impact of unification requires that they be allowed to vote on the question. So this does not say that the board is saying, you know, here's where, here's the voting area for this unification. It is saying that the local organization, reorganization committee, county committee should establish what the voting boundaries are for the unification. That is all it is saying, and I want to make that very clear. At this point, I'd like to ask if there's questions of the board and then I will, there are some board comments, or, no, public comments. Questions?
I have a question about AB 780.
Yes, sir.
If the board adopts this resolution, it's really adopting all the elements of AB 780?
What it is saying, it is saying that 780 was enacted into law. It allows for a local committee to, to consider the issue and it calls for government agencies of either the city council, the Board of Supervisors, or LAFCO to support that local, that the local committee make the decision. It does not put the board in any position of being a petitioner or being obligated any further than a resolution saying this should go to the local reorganization county committee. Is that correct, County Council?
Essentially, and I think in answer to Supervisor Flynn's question, the revision to the resolution that calls out Education Code Section 35-800 specifically invokes the sections added by AB 780.
Okay, thank you. Let me just ask one more question.
Yes, sir.
The voting, the people who will be allowed to vote by this AB 780 will be people who live in the Pleasant Valley District. Is that correct?
No, that is not determined. That will be determined by the county committee. The voting district is determined by the County Reorganization Committee under 780.
Is that your understanding of it?
That is my understanding, yes, that the County Committee on School District Reorganization would determine whether there is going to be an election and if so, in what area.
Okay, that has not been determined.
No, sir.
And therefore, the committee will determine who votes. It could be people living in the Pleasant Valley School District. It could be people, all the voters in the Oxnard Union High School District. Am I correct?
It could be Mesa Union, it could be Somas. This language says the parties of interest who would, who would have a, basically give input to that County Reorganization Committee to say they wish to be included in that voting area, and that is determined by the Superintendent of County Schools and the County Reorganization Area Committee.
So that, I just want to make sure I understand. So that question is still open?
Correct.
And just to become more specific, if the people in Port Wainimi or Oxnard want to vote on the issue, they will be allowed to give input?
It has to be, it has to be those areas that are in the, in the districts currently. Oxnard, Oxnard Union High School District includes Mesa Union Elementary and Somas Elementary and Pleasant Valley. And Pleasant Valley, of course, is the petitioner for unification.
In other words, all the area of the Oxnard High School.
Yes. So, Port Wainimi doesn't, does not, it's not in the Oxnard, well, it is in the Oxnard Union School District.
It is in the Oxnard Union High School.
That's true.
Wainimi, no, Wainimi High School is one of the high schools.
Right.
Okay.
Other questions? Okay, at this time, I'd like to invite up Sandra Berg for public comment. And Sandra is the current president of the Pleasant Valley School District. Good morning and welcome.
Good morning, Supervisors and Chairman Long. And thank you for placing this item on your agenda for local governance and local decision-making. I am Sandy Berg and I'm President of the Pleasant Valley School District Board of Trustees. And as a trustee, it is my sworn duty to provide educational excellence to our local community in Camarillo. We have some citizens with us here today that join me in asking you to approve this resolution brought by Supervisor Long. I can see that you have a very full agenda today, so rather than have everyone speak, I would just ask our parents, our teachers, our concerned citizens that are here in support of this resolution, just to please quietly stand. And we understand that this is not a resolution in support of unification, but rather a resolution that supports local governance in Ventura County. Thank you. One of the most frustrating experiences that I face is probably one that you face as well daily. We are given mandates and sweeping reforms from the state of California while at the same time our budgets are raided and promises are reneged upon. A small light went on however last year when the legislature unanimously approved AB 780, which would return a bit of self-governance to the counties. This piece of legislation allows counties to determine school district transfers of territory and unifications. We have an 11-member committee that does nothing else but these two issues in Ventura County. This is their area of expertise. There are two members from each one of your supervisory districts, plus one member at large. They are qualified, most have careers in school administration or governance in Ventura County, they live here, and they know educational issues here in Ventura County. As a side note, four of the five supervisors sitting here are involved in this particular unification process, so it's absolutely relevant that you be involved in this. The State Board of Education, which in the past has determined these issues for Ventura County, also has 11 members, but currently there are five vacancies on that State Board of Education. The governor has appointed five, but they have not been approved by the legislature. None of the current six is from Ventura County, nor have there been any appointees suggested by the governor from Ventura County. The State Board hears every educational issue in the state, from textbook adoptions to school building codes to sexual harassment, bilingual education, pension matters, expulsion guidelines, on and on. They meet six times a year, every other month. There is a petition regarding this matter currently before the State Board and it's been there for 14 months. We heard this last weekend from State Superintendent Jack O'Connell up at a county meeting that it will be at least another year before they hear it. All studies will be outdated by then, which will cost our district thousands of dollars to update. Our Ventura County Committee on School District Organization does one thing. They take a look at the county, they determine what is best for the students in the county, and they decide local school governance districts. They have 120-day mandated time to decide these matters. The state has no timeline mandates. It can take and has taken five to six years for the State Board of Education to hear unifications. I want you to know at the county level, it is the same process that the State Board of Education goes through. They study the same nine criteria. They call upon independent consultants. It is the same decision-making process. What this would do is stop the duplicitous process and allow this matter to be decided in a timely manner. We ask your support today of this resolution to let local experts determine local issues rather than the state. Thank you.
Thank you. Jan McDonald, Council Member, City of Camarillo. Welcome, good morning.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to be here this morning. We're used to meeting at night, so it's, I'm not a morning person, so. I would just like to report to you that last Wednesday night, the Camarillo City Council adopted a similar resolution asking that this become a local issue. I know we in local government share the misery sometimes of having to react to what the state does to us. Those in Sacramento are often very good at demanding we do things, raiding our pocketbooks and then telling us to take action, often not funding that action. So, this is a rare opportunity where the state has given us the authority to take an action at a local level, and we need to seize that opportunity because it doesn't often happen. Our conversation at our city council meeting really centered around that theme of local control, taking a decision that affects us on a local level and deciding it here in Ventura County. We looked at this process and what, the position we're in, the position you're in, is very unique. We start the ball rolling. As Supervisor Long mentioned, you're not taking a position one way or another, but we likened it to a referee in a basketball game. You're throwing the ball in the air and now the players are going to play the game. So our role as a city council, your role as a supervisor, is to throw that ball in the air and let it get going. So that is the role you take today. And once it starts, there is a process in place. The state has laid it out. Ed Code lays out the whole process. And there are several public hearings involved in this. So the people on a local level in all of the areas affected will have the opportunity to come before this county board you hear, organization board you hear about and be able to give their opinions. So it's the people from, from Port Wainimi, from Oxnard, from Somas, from Camarillo, they will all be able, on several occasions, to be heard and have their opinion heard. Then that decision will be made at a local level. So we really urge you to help us in getting this started. Bring it home, let the decision be made here in Ventura County to the people who are truly affected, and let's get this thing done in a timely manner. I happened to be on the school board in 2002 when this started. As you can see, that's been a lot of years later. My children graduated from, from high school and I got to graduate as well and move on to the city council. But it's an issue that I find that is still very, very important and I'm willing to spend the time and effort to see this issue through. So I urge you to, to take this stance today, to join us in sending this forward and bringing it home.
Thank you.
I'll gladly answer any questions that might have come up at our council meeting that, that.
No, don't see any. Thank you so much. Patricia Lerner.
My name is Patricia Lerner and I reside in Camarillo. And I have been active in the Pleasant Valley School District now for about six years as a volunteer in my son and daughter's school, as well as serving on a variety of district committees. And currently, I am serving as PTA Council President for the Camarillo Council. But today, I'm here as my role is apparent. And we've already heard from two of our city leaders, Jan McDonald and Sandy Berg for our Pleasant Valley School Board. And so today, I guess I'm kind of here as the parent person, representing perhaps that segment of the community. I know you have received emails over the course of the weekend on this issue, and it's an emotional issue and an issue on the mind of, I think, all the parents of the Pleasant Valley School District at the current time. I am asking you to please pass this resolution and help us bring this to a vote. This is, this issue is about local control and it's only fitting that it's answered at the local level by the county committee who understands what the issues are for the communities of the Oxnard Union High School District and the Pleasant Valley School District. And I, I think everything has been explained very well by Jan McDonald and Sandy Berg so far, but I do ask you to please throw the ball in the air and help us get this to a vote, get this decided so that we can move on. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Morgan, Council Member, City of Camarillo. Good morning.
Good morning. I don't come to you very often, and when I do, it's something I think is important to our community and the community that we represent. I'm not going to go into all the details that Sandra Berg and Ms. McDonald indicate, or address because you, you know that's, local control is what we're after and we're trying to get this issue solved and done and not delayed another one, two years or more, or maybe even put the rest without coming to a vote. We'd like to see our people have that vote to bring it to local control so we can make our own decision how our, our schools are going to go. For instance, looking at those on the board here, each of you have your own unified school districts. It's time for Camarillo to have that kind of choice. And before we have that choice, we need to go through this system. We need to get this resolution passed. So I urge you to pass the resolution that's presented. Thank you.
Thank you. We also have two cards submitted, Roger Lund and Kim Martin, in support of the same resolution. And that's the end of the public comment cards on this, and I appreciate you coming to speak to the board on this item. I'll put it forward as a motion, as recommended, and again, strongly support that. One of the things I'd like to say is that there is still great opportunity for the two school district boards to sit together at a common table. And I urge and invite that to happen because I believe the studies that have been done by Pleasant Valley School District are now in the community. If Oxnard's Union School District has additional studies they'd like to have done, have questions regarding the issues that should go before the voters, that they should join a common table with the school district in the interest of the students and the parents to be served, in the interest of the students and the parents. So, motion to. Second. Thank you. Comment? Motion to second, comment?
Just a quick comment. And I know that Supervisor Long has taken great care to make sure that everybody understands this is not the board taking a position on a local community issue, although most of us somehow have a portion of this discussion. But I think it's critical, and it goes back to my days on the city council and then here, and that local control, to me, is the most important thing. And the process that people will go through on both sides of this discussion is healthy no matter the outcome. Everybody needs to understand, pardon me, where each side is coming from. Can something be done short of unification? I don't know. It's not my area where the heart of this whole discussion is. But I think it's critical that the discussion happen and that's why I'm support.
Motion to second. Any further comments, Supervisor Flynn?
Excuse me. I certainly appreciate the comments that all of you have made here today. It's, it is a local issue, I understand that. My concern is the law itself, or AB 780. I'm just not certain that all the people, even though you've said so, all the people will have a chance to vote. It seems to me that's going to be determined really by the committee. Rio Mesa High School is a really great institution. And the parents from the Camarillo area and the parents from the El Rio and Nylon Acres area and parts of Oxnard have come together and have done some great things there, great partnering, partners in moving along and giving the school some assets. Witness the swimming pool that has been built at Rio Mesa. It was really led by people from Camarillo. But my big concern. But my big concern is this, is that the young people that attend that school and the students, let's say it's successful, and the students leave and they're going to a high school located in Camarillo or located in the Pleasant Valley School District. What are the students who remain there, the students from El Rio and Nylon Acres and parts of Oxnard, going to think? What impact is it going to have on them? What impact is it going to have when people from Camarillo leave that school? In high school, you make some rather great human relationships. It's always hard, for example, for a parent to move out of the school district into another area. Often, they leave their child with someone so that child can continue to attend that school. So I'm going to vote no on the issue for those reasons, because I think it's going to have a negative impact on both the Camarillo High School students and the students from El Rio, Nylon Acres, and parts of Oxnard, where the ethnic composition is approximately 90% Latino. So my no vote is based on that.
Any other comments? Okay, then, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes with four one, and I'd like to offer to you Supervisor Flynn, the reports that have been done to date, the only reports done since Oxnard hasn't conducted any reports, on the feasibility of unification study and the ethnic issue is addressed and the school facilities master plan, if you'd like to review them at a future date.
Well, just let me make another comment. In the late 1970s, County of Santa Barbara had a split county decision to make because the people of Santa Maria, Lompoc, and some parts of San Onofre Valley had an initiative to put it on the ballot, to make two counties, to separate Santa Maria, Lompoc, and parts of San Onofre Valley from the County of Santa Barbara. And I served, I was appointed by Governor Jerry Brown to serve as the chair of this committee that explored it. But everyone in the County of Santa Barbara voted on that, and therefore, I think that's another issue that I would hope, if this goes forward, everyone in the Oxnard Union High School District would vote on it.
Thank you for your comments. Item passes four one, and thank you for public speakers. Okay, board, we have a closed session we need to go into, but perhaps I could ask Mr. Matheny to do his 9:30 report on investments, and then we'll go into the closed session and deal with the item that will be before us, an item.
Thank you for the opportunity, Madam Chair and members of the board. You have before you our investment report for the month of February, showing that we had a 2.6% pool return for the month. 2.9 million, just under $3 million, of additional revenue provided to the taxpayers of this county because of the investments through the treasury pool. I thought I would take a moment to let you know that out of the $881 million in secured property taxes that I'm charged with collecting for this tax year, we have already put in the bank $545 million of that. We're at about the 62% level. Again, the taxpayers of this county are paying their property taxes earlier than we have ever seen. This percentage rate on the portion of the roll that is collected is now almost a full percentage point ahead of last year's pace. Last year's pace was ahead of the year before. We've had, well, in the five years that I've been associated with the Tax Collectors Office, we have improved upon that rate each and every collection cycle, and of course, that's nothing to do with what we're doing, other than that we're collecting it and processing it at an earlier phase. It has everything to do with the people who live here and own real estate here and are stepping up to the plate in a more timely fashion to get the funds in, which makes it a lot easier for those people who either because they forget or because of cash flow issues, they have to postpone their payments until closer to the deadline. But I just want to express my appreciation to the taxpayers, the property owners of this county.
Absolutely.
Madam Chair, I'm sure it has something to do with the joy people have in writing Larry Matheny on those checks. I think you've made it a very enjoyable process for everybody.
We don't want to discount the little pieces. Maybe it's the candy at the front counter. I don't know.
I think it's the candy at the front counter.
That's it. That's it. Thank you, sir. No further questions? Motion?
Move to receiving file.
Second.
Motion to second, seeing no objection. Thank you so much. Good work, and thank you, taxpayers. Okay, the board's going into a brief closed session to handle one item, and then we'll be back out for our agenda. Let's go.
Board members, I'd like to have some discussion if we could on the, I know we have a 10 o'clock in front of us, but I know we have people present and there's been a request to have a discussion regarding item 30, which is the request by myself and Supervisor Michaels on the Department of Airports issue and pursuing a grant. So because there are people present, and Supervisor Flynn has said that the City of Oxnard has asked for a continuance on this, we need to have a discussion so these folks who are present either know they can stay or not. So I'll put that out there for discussion. Since I've carried the letter in, Supervisor Michaels, I'd like to say that I would prefer to have the board hear this and act on it because the grant does have a critical timeline, and we will lose the window of opportunity to go after the grant if we don't act on this today. So that's my comment on it. Supervisor Michaels?
Yes, obviously, since I signed it, I believe very strongly in the fact that, you know, we need to take some sort of action today, whatever is the majority of the board, and it should be obvious what my position is. I can understand the City of Oxnard saying they don't want us to hear it, but this is a county policy issue. It has elevated to the county policy level, and the Board of Supervisors as the trustees of this airport really should be the ones to make the final determination. And I understand there's a tremendous amount of conflict over this issue in the local area. However, I will tell you that I've received tons, that's not a technical term, of emails, which I tried to answer one-handed, so if anybody didn't get an answer back, I apologize. And I believe that there's enough interest that this needs to be heard today. The opinions and et cetera of the Oxnard City Council were put forward at the authority meeting. It has now, in my mind, escalated beyond the authority and up to the policymaker level, which is the Board of Supervisors. So I would vote to hear it today.
Other comments? Supervisor Flynn?
Yes, thank you very much. The city did request just this morning, I got a note, that the, I had to be continued, the city mayor and some of the council people and city staff are in Washington, DC. They really knew nothing about the issue that was on the board agenda today. Also, there are some people in Oxnard who were unaware of the issue. They've been calling, especially people that live in the departure area of the airport, people down in the Oxnard Shores area, and people over the central city of Oxnard have asked, they have said they need more time. They just weren't able to make it. You know, the authority meets at night, and in order to accommodate people to come and make a comments about issues, because many people are working, I would hope that we would continue it out of respect for the City Council of Oxnard.
Supervisor Parks?
Kind of new to all the airport issues, and I know that there's a lot of sensitivity out there, and I have a concern, both the supervisor representing the area and the city there has some concerns, obviously, that they would like us to hear. And because I am kind of not as educated as I should be, because I just don't know the history of it, I would like to be able to give that opportunity. I just would like to be able to make sure that this is, if it was passed already by, I guess, the advisory committee, and then the Airport Commission was the one that denied it, would this be overruling the Airport Authority? Is that what this would normally come before us?
Yes.
Right.
I'm sorry, would it?
Yes, it would be. The Airport Advisory Commission voted in support of it with one objection, and the Airport Authority voted in opposition to it. I was not able to attend that meeting, so it was the Oxnard Representatives, and it was a 3-1 vote, so there was an Oxnard Airport Authority member who voted in support of it also. So the MOU between, that set up the authority requires a four-fifths vote of the board to overturn the Airport Authority action.
So then this would be an act to overturn it. Okay. I'm just, I'm afraid to say that I don't feel comfortable at this time in supporting the recommendation and without allowing the, you know, the courtesy of those in the City of Oxnard, who have, you know, a lot of, they have a lot of stake in the outcome of what happens with this, to at least give them the opportunity to comment.
Well, I'd like to ask if perhaps it would be best to hear the item and hear the comments of people who are here regarding this item, because it's a grant request, and a grant request that would come back through the process for acceptance of the grant, should it be approved, should we acquire the grant. This is nothing more than that. It's a grant request, and perhaps if there are questions raised in the discussion today that could be answered, then that might, one, provide a better level of comfort regarding the request that's before us. It is nothing more than a grant request.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
If I might add to that. And the grant request is merely for a study to look at how or possibly increasing commuter service at the Oxnard Airport. It is not okaying that, it is not implementing anything, because the study hasn't happened yet. It's a coalition of small airports that are looking to study the process of increasing service. The board, still, at any time, not only the board, but the Airport Authority, could choose to accept, approve, and implement anything out of the study, or to not do so. But if we don't at least hear this today, and in my mind, move forward with the grant application, we've lost all opportunity. And I don't think anybody on this board has ever been for losing opportunity to study an issue. It's not like we are now instituting something that would increase air traffic and commuter service at the airport. We were looking for help from the federal government to study that. There are still several opportunities for the City of Oxnard, the citizens, and everyone to put input on, into the results of a study. And, you know, perhaps everybody ought to look at the fact that the study might say, well, no, at this time, it doesn't look like you're going to get increased traffic. I mean, you know, everybody's like jumped over the moon on something that's merely a study.
Supervisor Bennett?
Well, I think you were getting ready to say we probably crossed over the line debating the issue rather than whether we're going to vote on the issue, but kind of making sure we clearly understand. But with regard to Supervisor Michael's comments, my understanding there's two applications here. One is for a study, but the other is, it's actually for startup money. That's correct there? Right. So that one would be to, if we get it, that would be to increase the service.
Yeah, you're correct, and I do stand corrected on that. I was thinking-
But it would still come back to us.
Absolutely.
But without any of it, nothing happens.
Because this is a grant, and it would come back to us, I would be inclined to go ahead, I'm at least inclined to go ahead and hear what these speakers have to say. But at the same time, I would point out to the two supervisors that brought the letter, this does require a four-fifths vote, and if we have two supervisors that are saying, you know, they're not comfortable with it at this point in time, I think that sort of makes it a foregone conclusion where this would be. So perhaps we-
But they haven't heard the testimony either, and they can't make comments if they have to.
Yeah. So perhaps we could hear this with the idea of continuing it while we have the people here.
My only question is that we allow the City of Oxnard to have input on the issue. As you both, as all of you know, we have these airport authorities, and the airport authorities for Camarillo and Oxnard, authorities members look at each issue very carefully, somewhat like a planning commission looks at issues with the airport. And we have a good relationship on the Oxnard Airport Authority. I think we should simply hear the testimony today, not take any action, and defer it to next to, to next to me. That'd be my motion.
Well, I'd like to, again, bring the item forward so we can hear the discussion on it, and then we can make the decision after we hear the public comment also. Again, I feel there is a critical timeline, and I will ask that specific question of our airport administrator regarding the item before us. So we will, if we could, then move ahead, there's at least an interest in at least hearing it today and hearing the public comment on it, on item 30. As presented, and as Supervisor Michaels has already spoke to, and I believe I have too, the item is pretty straightforward, and it is being brought forward because I strongly feel that we have, this is a regional asset, and it is something that we have a fiduciary responsibility is to keep, to help to keep the enterprise healthy. And part of doing that is to make sure you study the market and to look at opportunities, particularly through grant dollars, to see how you can look at your operations and look at if there's an opportunity for operations to keep it a strong, healthy enterprise. And one of the things I'd like to make note of just before, if there are other questions, that one of the issues that's been raised is that this would take the operations at Oxnard Airport and expand the airport. And the public record, and frankly, in the last report we had on the Oxnard Master Plan, there was a chart that talked about the peak operations in the last 15 years at Oxnard Airport, and talked about the annual inplanements, I always struggle over that word, in the last 15 years, and that if we, if we are successful in acquiring these grants, which are very competitive grants, that in fact, it would not even, if there were an operation that could be put in place, it would not take the operations at Oxnard Airport beyond what is already allowed and calls for in the master plan and the agreed-upon regional operations. The peak operations in the last 15 years reached over 152,000 compared to 90,000 in the year 2004. So we are well below operations at Oxnard Airport, and if we are successful in acquiring this additional interest in the airport, even with that, and this was presented in, at the Airport Advisory Commission and the Authority, it would not take the operations, the total airport operations, above anything as high as 152,000 or the numbers that have been peak operations there. So it's not an effort to expand the operations, it's frankly an expert to have a healthy fiduciary responsibility at the airport. If there are other questions or comments, I'll invite the public who submitted cards to step forward to speak, and I'll apologize just a moment to our rural tourism group that will be with you in a moment.
I do have questions for the airport, but I can ask them after the public comments.
Sure. Eugene Fossil, is he still here? Oh, I saw you, okay. He submitted a card in support of the request. Charles McLaughlin.
Chair, supervisor, CEO, auditor, and general counsel. Thanks very much, Charles McLaughlin. I'm an Oxnard resident and a business owner in the Oxnard Airport. I think Chair said a lot just now, very eloquent and to the point. This is only an application for a grant, and it's not taken out of any of the taxpayers' funds, it's taken completely out of the enterprise fund, so it's no cost to the taxpayers. The City of Oxnard really, and the residents of Ventura County, deserve another place to go other than LAX. On September 4th, 2001, America West pulled out of Oxnard. They were going direct to Phoenix, Arizona. And seven days later, of course, we had infamous 9/11, and I bet you they wish they could come back here, just so residents could get inside of the secure airport system at a small airport like Oxnard and travel to other locations besides having to either drive to LAX or fly just to LAX. So the residents of Oxnard need places to go, like Sacramento, Las Vegas, Phoenix, San Francisco, that type. They shouldn't just be limited to LAX. And this is not an expansion of the airport, like the Chair said. There will be no additional runways built, no additional taxiways, and they'll only use areas at the terminal counter space that's already existing. So it won't take any additional real estate, it'll just use the assets that are there. And the asset that is there is a very unique county asset, and it's being underutilized right now. In September of 2002, the National Research Center put out an Oxnard citizen survey. Some of the results of that survey, if you could believe it, 85% of the people said the Oxnard Airport commuter service was an asset. 75% of the people said they wanted to expand commuter service. And would you believe, 56% of the people didn't object to having commuter jet services into Oxnard? Now, this was a study done by the city, so if the City Council wants to come next week and respond to something, they pay for this. All right, go right here. So the City of Oxnard has problems in other areas. Some of it's a gang injunction, graffiti, congested alleyways, overcrowded single-family residents, encroachment on agricultural land. This issue, improving commuter service, won't affect any of that whatsoever. So you shouldn't feel guilty at all supporting this issue for the residents of Oxnard. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Patricia Thomas.
Good morning. Chairman Long, members of the board, Mr. Johnson, I'm so relieved that you agreed to hear this this morning, because next Monday, I'm going out of Oxnard to Washington, DC on our very own commuter airline. So thank you so much for letting me talk today. My name is Patricia Thomas. I live in Camarillo, and I'm here as a resident of Ventura County since 1982. I've been a member of the Ventura County Aviation Advisory Commission for nearly 15 years, and I'm a pilot, which is beside the point on this issue before you, except that I do have a knowledge of aviation and transportation issues in Ventura County. I understand how sensitive aviation issues can be here, and I know that there are some compatibility issues, too. The county, the board, has responded to these compatibility issues, as is evident by the recent adoption of an Oxnard Airport Master Plan. The Master Plan contemplates continuing the role of Oxnard Airport in providing general aviation services and limited commercial airline service as a resource to Ventura County residents. In the early 1980s, when I began utilizing our commercial airline services in Ventura County, we had eight airline round trips per day. In the mid-1990s, we hit a peak of 15 round trips a day, when we were very well-served by both American Eagle and United Airlines commuter flights. In the year 2000, we had seven flights. And in the year 2000, we were working on this Master Plan. The Master Plan was in progress during that time. Today, we have just five round trip flights to Los Angeles. Although we have about- we have about half as many total inplane passengers today as at our peak, I'll tell you that every time I take those flights, they're generally full. I've made it a practice recently to sit with someone in the waiting area and start a conversation, try to learn where they're from. Most recently, there was a delightful older lady who has children's dance schools, and she lives in the Oxnard Shores area. I've talked to people from Ventura who work for Fish and Game, a business owner from Oxnard, employees of defense contractors from Camarillo, Thousand Oaks, and Newberry Park, a couple from Mandalay Bay, and many, many naval personnel from Port Weneme and Point Magoo. Most weekends, you'll find bright-eyed, enthusiastic sailors arriving with their brand-new sea bags, and they're here to learn how to be Seabees. These people are going between Ventura County and Washington, D.C., Seattle, Chicago, Las Vegas, San Francisco, Sacramento, and then even on to the Orient, Europe, and the Middle East. Those of us who've had to drive to Burbank or LAX at dawn in order to make a meeting in Sacramento, understand what an ordeal that can be. All of these people are people who live here in Ventura County, many of them taxpayers and voters, utilizing this valuable county resource to do business and perhaps have a fun trip. The issue before you concerns two separate applications for grants. Neither of these will bring a China Airlines 747 in to get stuck on our runway, like happened at LAX this weekend. And these grants won't even bring regional jets into Ventura County, because they want a minimum of 6,000 feet of runway. We don't have that either. If the coalition application is successful, it gets us an air service analysis. If the study indicates a need, the coalition would apply for an adequate grant to implement interstate service, which might benefit Merced, Visalia, Modesto, Stockton, Santa Maria, or even Ventura County, among others. The second item pays a consultant to prepare an air service improvement grant application. This grant would provide seed money to underwrite the startup losses which a commuter airline will incur if it begins northbound service from Ventura County to Sacramento. We know there's a market for these flights from Ventura County, and we know there's an airline interested. Please remember that airlines today walk a very thin tightrope, a daily tightrope, between success and bankruptcy. When you look at the big picture, remember that about 10 years ago, we had 15 round-trip flights, and today we have five. It has varied between five and seven during the last four years. The second grant would cover an additional two flights per day to Sacramento, well within the intent of the Oxnard Master Plan. Although I'm not here representing the Aviation Advisory Commission, I'll tell you that the Commission approved these items with one negative vote. And the item, we approved the expenditure from the Airport Enterprise Fund, and we're pretty tight-fisted with that Airport Enterprise Fund.
Absolutely.
I hope that you'll approve these recommendations. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas. Stephen Weiss.
Good morning, Chairman Long, members of the board, Mr. Johnson. I'm Steve Weiss. I'm also a commissioner on the Airport Advisory Commission, appointed by Supervisor Flynn. And I've lived in the county since 1979. I used to travel about 40 weeks out of the year. And when I just came aboard here, I was able to travel from Oxnard Airport directly to Sacramento, to San Francisco, to Monterey. And it was quite helpful in the success of my business. What I'd like to address here today is the fact that I see the county and the Board of Supervisors representing the people of the county in the issue of the airport being totally reactive in this process instead of proactive. Since I moved to the county, the county has grown tremendously. And I know it's the position for the county, the slow growth, but I don't think the cities in this county have gone along with that slow-growth concept. We're busting at the seams. Our roads, our infrastructure is just a deadlock. For those of you that travel, if you have to make it to Burbank or LAX, you know all the problems to encounter. As far as if you use rail service, you can possibly get to Burbank. If the few trains, their running times fit your flight. As far as Santa Barbara, as we all know with the lock-and-sheeta thing, if you had a flight out of Santa Barbara, you were in deep trouble. You were just, you know, in animated suspension here. What I see overall in this issue, and with all due respect to Supervisor Flynn, a very small vocal minority of people in this county are affecting the welfare of the masses. And I think it's up to us all to look at the overall picture. We have this huge county here, and we have a need to provide air service. It's the key to our survival. And let's not put our heads in the sand and just try to bury this or think it's going to go away. Sure. You know, for some people, it's not the greatest thing, having a plane go over your house. But that's the reality of things. You look at cities all over the country, and that's how it comes down. Supervisor Flynn made the comment in the Airport Authority meeting that he feels it's economically feasible for, if it's economically feasible for commuter service to be operating out of Oxnard, they would come in and make a proposal. Well, with all due respect, Supervisor Flynn, we all know where the airline industry is today, and that's just not a happening thing. The airlines are hurting, and the people of Ventura County deserve better. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. David Long.
Madam Chairman, members of the board, my name is David Long. I'm a resident of Thousand Oaks, and I'm here today strictly representing myself. I'd like to have that clearly understood. I'm a retired airline pilot. One of the few advantages to getting to be a senior citizen, and there aren't many, is that you can stand around and tell people all the things you've done. I have about 50 years in the airplane business, so I've learned a few things. Some of them I'd like to unlearn. I won't repeat what's been said, because every one of the comments by the previous speaker I had intended to bring up. So they've stolen my thunder. The purpose of this grant money, let me back up, the funding of this grant is from airline tickets and airline fuel sales. Every time you buy a ticket or you buy a gallon of gasoline at the airport, a little piece of that money goes to the DOT in Washington for the airport, they call it a trust fund. That's a great word, isn't it?
Huh.
But the intent of that money is to improve equipment, service, airports in the country. This particular one we're talking about is to assist municipalities in improving access to the National Air Transport Service. They've already talked about that this morning. How do you get from here to anywhere else? The service of Oxnard, I'm not going to belittle that, because if I lived up there, I'd probably want to use it. But it would be ridiculous for me to drive from where I live over to Oxnard to fly back to Los Angeles. So my alternative is this, a motor vehicle trip on Highway 101, or maybe 118, depending on where I live. And I'm talking for about 200,000 people that live over on the dark side of the Canale Grade. I concur with all the previous speakers, and in the interest of brevity, I'll call it that. One more thing, I truly respect the input for the city council of Oxnard. That happens to be where the airport is located. But as far as I'm concerned, that airport belongs to every citizen of this county, not just the city council of Oxnard. I'm looking at the tail wagging the dog, if you will, and I'd like to see that changed. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Steve Kenny.
Madam Chair, Supervisors, Mr. Johnson, I'm Steve Kenny. I'm the president of EDCO, the Economic Development Corporation of Oxnard. I'd just like to make two brief points, because I think a lot of good points have already been made to you this morning. Number one, it's a pretty obvious statement, but should be made anyhow, that the business community of not just Oxnard, but West County in general, I would say, of Camarillo and Ventura and Port Weneme, all benefit by an expansion of choice in air service flying out of Oxnard. And by choice, I mean destination choice. When the only choice is LAX, you know, that's better than nothing, but not much better than nothing, to the extent that other destinations could be added in to the inventory, so that local businesses making the connections they need to make throughout the state would be certainly advantaged by having that available locally. Secondly, with respect to the operation of the airport itself, Madam Chair, you used the term "enterprise," and I think it's important to remember that the airport itself, your airport is in enterprise operation. It's a business. An airport is not just planes landing on a runway. An airport to be really viable and provide the service that needs to be provided to a community means not just an airline, but car rental agencies, travel agencies, a restaurant, taxi service, charters available, all the ancillary services that you typically expect that surround the provision of airline service. As was said, we've gone from 15 round trips a day down to five round trips a day. All that affects the volume of people that go through the airport, which in turn affects the viability of all of those small businesses that are struggling to operate within the airport terminal. And to the extent that they finally just have to give up the ghost and move out, that detracts from the service level available, which is then less attractive both to residents to use the airport and to the airlines themselves to operate out of the airport. So I think just to keep the enterprise viable, there's kind of a minimum level of activity that just has to take place within the terminal. So anything that can be done to bolster the activity level, and these grants both seem to point in that direction. Again, operating clearly within the limitations imposed by the Master Plan. I think you should be anxious to explore anything that would achieve that, and particularly when it involves bringing grant funds in from outside the community, that's just some icing on the cake. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. I have not accepted the last cards that were tried to be submitted. The agenda guidelines for the board clearly says that to not accept additional speaker cards once an item commences. If you wish to have your comments read by the board, you can submit them on a yellow card. Martin Jones? Both Martin Jones and Jane Tomac were in the room when the item started, so I will certainly receive those and welcome your comments.
Thank you, Chairman Long. I first heard of this last night when visiting a friend who lives in Oxnard Shores. I am Martin Jones. I do live in Oxnard. I submit to you that this is a question of fairness. It's not in the too-distant past that I ran for office in Oxnard. And when I did that, I discovered a great number of people, just citizens, not organized, as we see today, that are opposed to the kind of operations that have been going on in the City of Oxnard. Twice, I suggested the relocation of Oxnard Airport, based on studies that exist in the library in Oxnard. If it is a question of distance, it might be better to consider, at risk of one's life, have it in Camarillo. Aside from that, people are very interested in this subject. There are many citizens in Oxnard who, if given the chance, would be here today to speak in opposition to this commuter airline. Some people know that I have been an aviator and that I enjoy flying a great deal. So I have nothing against aircraft of any kind operating anywhere near me, but others do. And I submit that what we should do is put this over and give citizens of Oxnard the opportunity to be here at a future date, to express their views on what is happening at the Oxnard Airport. I also believe that most of the people that will be using this kind of air service are living in the south part of Ventura County. And I believe it is an unfair burden to put this solely on the citizens of Oxnard without hearing from them. And it is well-known by many that I very rarely question the wisdom of public officials, but this might be one of those times.
Thank you, sir. Jane Tomac.
I also live in Oxnard and have, you know-
Could you pull the microphone down a little bit, please, Jane?
Oh, there. I've lived in Oxnard since 1949, and I'm well aware of, actually, I was on the city council, I think, during much of the discussion about airports. Camarillo Airport was a major airport, that there was a lot of action to oppose development of a major airport at Camarillo, that we all in Oxnard participated in, in opposition to the Camarillo Airport and also to expansion of the Oxnard Airport. And I just think, I'm shocked that you're taking this up after you knew that the Oxnard City Council is unavailable to participate in this meeting. And I really am quite surprised, because I think that if the people who put something on an agenda and round up all their supporters to come to that, should not push that through, knowing that the major representative, representation in Oxnard, it cannot participate. I just really am quite shocked by you doing this, because it just doesn't seem like the right thing for a public body to do, in my mind. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. That concludes the comments on this item. Bring it back for the board discussion. I think there was a question that Supervisor Bennett wanted to ask first. And you can submit, yes, sir. You can submit the-
Not mine, it's the neighbors'.
Okay. Supervisor Bennett?
Yeah, Mr. Smith, if I could. Just to try to be brief, because, see where we are going to go with this. But first of all, the timing of the grant, what's the issue in terms of the timing of the grant?
April 22nd is the grant application deadline, and that would be six, I think, six weeks from right now. And within whatever period of time there is, if this were to move forward, there is an entire element of outreach to the business community to seek that necessary component of matching funds to a grant. That's absolutely critical to a grant application, to demonstrate community support.
Okay. My second question is, in the second part, in the second application, the money for the startup, is that, is it accurate to say that's one flight out and one flight in a day? Is that what that is?
Would more than likely be two flights a day, two round trips a day. A morning flight up to Sacramento and one back, and then the afternoon one going up and back.
Okay.
Would, is likely what will be contemplated in the application, to be subsidized, a grand amount somewhere $400,000 to $500,000 would probably buy about eight to 10 months of subsidized service.
Okay. So that's up, so there'd be a flight up and back in the morning and a flight up and back in the afternoon?
Yes, that's what's been indicated to me by the air service consultant. Yes, that's what's been indicated to me by the air service consultant.
And we have five flights right now. Those are five round trip flights right now?
Yes.
Right, okay. And we used to have 16 in terms of round trip flights.
Yes, at one time we had 15, yes.
And then would the first application, the $200,000 for the study overall, be a study of only the Oxnard Airport, or would it be a study of Oxnard and Camarillo Airport and the viability of either one of those?
That, referring to the Coalition Study, would identify only Oxnard Airport in this area. And there would be seven or eight other airports throughout the state included in that study, but only Oxnard.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there other questions? Supervisor Parks?
As I read, it would require about $500,000, half a million dollars to start it up, and you're saying that's for about eight months. And it also, the report talks about airport sponsors are allowed to support startup service by waiving terminal rents or landing fees. That would be something that the Oxnard Airport could do.
Yes.
What's the likelihood that without subsidy, something like this could happen?
As an initial startup? In today's environment right now, I think it's very unlikely until airlines start returning to profitability in general, that they don't want to take the risk of those losses that it would take to bring a route up to what would be profitability.
It's, just looking at that, that it is a situation that requires so much subsidy, it may be difficult to expand this or extend it, continue it over the eight-month period. So this may just be something that is, kind of comes in and we get it for eight months and it goes away again, or, you know, I'm wondering what's the likelihood of this continuing? I guess that's part of what the study will look at, but it does seem like it isn't something that necessarily will last very long, unfortunately, for those who want it.
That's a distinct possibility, that a startup service, when subsidy ends, would not be self-sustaining. That's really been the knock on revenue guarantees and airline subsidies through the years. However, in this case, the DOT program that Congress directed is hopeful that these type of grants are going to help small communities get these services established, and they would be self-sustaining. It could go either way.
And I also, just coming from overseeing the airport, the concern of giving away free rent and all that when we could actually be collecting funds from it. So I weigh that against what's the benefit of the service. And I would think that it'd be, it wouldn't be your cheap $49 flights to Sacramento that we're talking about you can get out of Burbank or LAX. I would expect that these are for probably clients who can afford more expensive shuttle service to Sacramento.
I can't comment on what the fair structure might be. I don't have any information for you, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you.
But the issue, again, is the April 22nd deadline requires a lot of work to be done ahead of time that you certainly wouldn't feel with board's guidance to undertake that work if there wasn't some action taken.
That's correct.
Today. That was, in my thinking, the critical timeline. Supervisor Park Michaels?
Who?
Any other questions, sir? Other question? Steve has a question? Supervisor, okay.
I don't necessarily have a question. I was going to make a couple of comments on the responses about the commuter service subsidy, how long that would last, whether an airline would come or not come. And it's, quite frankly, I don't know how relevant it is to today's discussion and how lengthy we want to make this discussion, but in the last three regional transportation planning efforts from SCAG, I have been the Chair of the Aviation Task Force. And that's our job, is to look at how do you distribute passenger and cargo demand amongst the region. That's a six-county region here in Southern California. And what are the issues that face airport operators, face local communities, et cetera? And Mr. Smith is absolutely correct, and of course, even more so than I, because he goes to all of the airport operator meetings and that knows this inside and out. But the reality is, in talking to the airline industry representatives, they would like to get into other markets, but they are not going to take the risk of developing a new market. And they feel that their partners, the local cities and communities, you know, need to help to establish the service. And all of the studies that are done say the service will be there. As far as subsidizing, you know, subsidizing by waiving landing fees and that, it's done routinely all the time, LAX, every major airport in the United States to every little itty-bitty airport in the United States. And I think the reality is, if you don't do that type of thing, all of the studies point to the fact that you're not going to get rent anyway because you're not going to have businesses, and the local people don't pay the landing fees, it's commercial establishments that the FAA allows the charging of landing fees. So you have to be real careful in saying that I don't want to give anything away because this is an enterprise fund. It is an enterprise fund, and there are certain costs of doing business to increase your business and your viability. And it's done all over. And Mr. Smith probably didn't want to get into that long of a response, but it does take a partnership. And in today's market, we will not see an increase in service, i.e. different locations, San Francisco, Sacramento, et cetera, without some sort of partnership between the airport and the airlines. There are no guarantees that the program would go beyond the initial subsidies, but the chances are pretty good that they will. It's like any other startup business. I mean, hey, you know, you take a chance, you pay your nickel, and you hope it works out, with enough studies to back up the fact that it's not just a roll of the dice. And I would also, you know, reiterate at this point that, given the amount of time it would take to even apply for this grant, that applying for the grant, I do not believe is disrespectful to the city of Oxnard. They will have plenty of input. Should we, and chances are, what, 50/50 at best, that we would even be awarded the grant, either grant, you know, I mean, this board will have to authorize the acceptance of the grant down the road. The issue is timing. And I do not believe that people didn't know about this. And I will tell you, no one went out and, you know, got a whole group of people together to come down here and testify. I happen to have been incapacitated. I had no idea that NLC was happening until yesterday, when I called Mike Sedell from the city of Seminole Valley to answer a question to him that he had asked while I was in the hospital. And I found out he was not here. So it was not a planned situation, and I resent the inference that it is. And so with that, I would make the motion that the board move forward on this grant application, pardon me, this grant application, understanding that there is concern amongst the Oxnard City Council and some persons, that there will be time to listen to their concerns again, and that should we be lucky enough, when the grant comes back, there will be plenty of notice for people to come down here and testify pro or con in acceptance of the grant funds. But to not even apply for those, I think, is shameful, considering that it is an enterprise fund, and it is an operation owned by the taxpayers of this county, every one of them. That's my motion.
I second the motion. Having authored the letter, I too feel that this is a grant application only, and it really gives us an opportunity to see if there's support to move forward and to bring it back for further public input and review and action. This is just a request for the agency to do what they're frankly challenged to do, which is to keep an enterprise healthy. That's a motion and a second.
Make a comment.
Yes, sir.
We had three people, I think, come in after the hearing started, mainly because it was not, there was not a fixed time for the hearing, a time certain. And so it was difficult to tell people, well, when will we hear this? And I told some people it would be 10:20, I think, or 10:30, one of the two. And they're here today. I don't know why we can't listen to them. They're here. I mean, there they are out there.
Well, they're certainly, again, welcome to submit a card that expresses their opinion, but the, you know--
I understand the card.
You know, the issue has been, the concern that I have is that we also have a 10 o'clock time certain that has now been bumped 40 minutes.
Then let me make some comments. First of all, this private and public enterprise funds are totally different. This is a public enterprise fund. It means that we need to draw in and talk with the entire public about these issues. One of the main things we've done in Oxnard, with the Oxnard Airport, is we've worked with the community. Some of the people you hear, you see here today are people who came to talk about master plan for the Oxnard Airport, and kind of people came together to try to work something out. The importance here is coexistence with the community and the airport. Compatibility, we've used that word a lot in talking about the Oxnard Airport. Try to make it compatible with the community and vice versa. And we've gone a long ways on that. For example, and not by passing rules and regulations, we've asked for cooperation from people who operate airplanes, and they've done that, so that the issue of coming in late at night is not as much of an issue today as it used to be. So this coexistence, engaging the community. You know, we often talk about why, why are people not voting today? They're not voting today for precisely the issue we see here today. We're rejecting three people who want to talk. They've come here to talk about the issue. We didn't put it at a time certain. We have not engaged the community. We've had a request from the city of Oxnard to continue the item until the city can come and discuss it. That isn't here today. And, you know, it is in the city limits of Oxnard. It's there. And to deny their request just isn't a good idea at all. It's not an idea that creates cooperation. So I would hope that we would vote against this issue today because primarily, we're not engaging the community.
Comment, Supervisor Parks?
I would ask that we continue this to next week, since it's, we have, I think, until mid-April or late April to have to get this submitted by. It's not that I think that we're disrespecting the city council by going for the grant, but disrespecting them because they have asked to have a say on this and aren't available to do that. So I think that's a good policy, whenever we have an opportunity to do that. I'm still, I'm afraid to say, a bit on the fence on this because I haven't got a clear understanding of the issues on both sides. I do have concerns. I think this, the study I'm not so much concerned with as I am with, this kind of commits us to a, it sounds like subsidizing, and I don't even have the knowledge that this happens all over the place, but it seems to me if we're subsidizing terminal rents, landing fees, these are, when we could be getting funds for that. It is a decision to make, and I need to weigh the benefits and costs of that. And I don't feel like I have that information before me. And actually, I don't even have the grant request in front of me. But I would like to just wait a week instead of moving forward today, primarily in respect for Oxnard, and then also to get some more information.
Madam Chair? I'm sorry, were you, I'm sorry, were you done? I'm still a little spacey, I think. I'm going to withdraw my motion. And the reason that I'm doing so is I believe that this is an unnecessary exercise in pure, unadulterated political maneuvering. And I believe that this airport asset is far too valuable to the entire community to continue. And I believe that if we continue this, it will become an absolute political football once again. I am sorry that this board does not understand in whole its obligation to seek whatever as the first step, whatever funding that could be an enhancement with final approval coming at the time of award of a grant. But I will not participate in furthering this joke of the Oxnard Airport and the fact that people say we want it and we don't. I'll tell you a little story. I was back in Washington not long ago, and I heard that there was a group of people from Oxnard talking to the Navy Department, saying that they would be thrilled if Point Magoo closed, because then they could move Oxnard Airport out to Point Magoo, NAS. Wrong tactic, folks. Wrong tactic. And I think it's unfortunate that people are not willing to come together, as Supervisor Flynn said, and work on these issues together, understanding the reality of all of the issues. We're not, this grant or other things that have been done or suggested for the airport are well within the master plan, A, so using that as a weak, weak excuse, and B, the type of service, you're talking four landings and takeoffs a day, probably not seven days a week, maybe. But even at that, it is not an expansion. And I really find it disingenuous when people pick and choose their words instead of openly and honestly discussing what the underlying issues are. Has nothing to do with Oxnard City Council not being here, or the board's somehow idea to slip in under the radar so they didn't know this was going on. This is perfectly within the policy purview of the Board of Supervisors. And therefore, I'm removing my motion from the floor, and I will not bring it back. And I find it very distasteful. I would hope next year, when this grant opportunity arises again, that in the meantime, we've had a better, more honest discussion. Because killing this airport by 1,000 cuts is not the right way to go, and that's what a small group of people is trying to do to air service in this county.
Madam Chair?
Supervisor Bennett?
So I take it you're making, you're making a different motion, which is--
I pulled my motion.
Well, which is to have, not to continue this item. You're saying--
Did you say continue?
Yeah. You just, you just want to withdraw this item so that we don't hear it at all?
I'll pull the second, withdraw the item, and we're done with this one.
Okay.
Okay. Now I apologize for the rural tourism--
I asked a question of our county council. What does withdraw mean? I don't understand that.
There is no motion.
I submitted the letter.
They brought the--
So I'm going to bring it, I'm going to withdraw it. Rural tourism, again, sincere apologies. Had I known that was a path that was going to become that long, we would have not moved it. I'm sorry. Truly, I'm sorry. Our rural tourism item, which is now before us, is an opportunity to thank the members of the Rural Tourism Advisory Committee for their hard work on, hours and hours of hard work on rural tourism. When we have a project like this, which is revising the zoning ordinance to promote rural tourism, we certainly can't do it without your help, without residents and folks who are really on the ground and familiar with the issues. Without your knowledge and your experience, we and our staff would not have been able to put together a package that was before this board, that we hope works in the real world. So all of you have worked on this committee. You're busy people, we know you are, and we just took another hour of your time, and I apologize. Numerous demands certainly on your time, but your expertise has been invaluable. The schedules you've held to, the issues you've tackled, we recognize both the value and importance, along with you, of the agriculture in our community, and that in order, as times change, and our agricultural economy must change and evolve to meet those challenges, your time and dedication and commitment's been appreciated. So I'm going to step down, and I believe I'll have the help of Debbie Malley to present some certificates of appreciation to the members of the Rural Tourism Advisory Committee. Delaney Ellis. These are beautiful, if I might share them with those who want to take a peek. This says-- This says for Delaney Ellis, hereby committed by the Board of Supervisors, Ag Futures Alliance for your contribution to the Rural Tourism Advisory Committee and dedication to promoting rural tourism in Ventura County.
Thank you.
And to Tim Cohen for contributions to the Rural Tourism Advisory Committee and dedication to promoting rural tourism in Ventura County.
Thank you.
Sue Kelly, legal women voters. Is Sue here? There she is. For her contributions also to the good work of the Rural Tourism Committee. Rex Laird of the Farm Bureau for co-chairing the Rural Tourism Advisory Committee. Earl McPhail, our Agricultural Commissioner for contributions and. And then Craig Underwood for your many, many contributions to this effort and the good work. And we thank you. Anyone like to say anything? We're going to take a quick. Rex and Craig and Tim and Ag Commissioner. Let's, um, let's do something over here so we can get the rest of the board in the background. Okay. Before us, we have a report on the rural tourism grant, proposed amendments. Oh, I'm, boy, I pulled that old one out. That was, we have a proposed amendments to the non-coastal zoning ordinance to implement results of the rural tourism grant project. And this is a, we'll have a presentation from staff and then comments, public comments and certainly board discussion on this item. And welcome, Chris Stevens.
Chair Long, members of the board, Mr. Johnson, I'm Chris Stevens with the Planning Division. Before I have Debbie Malley come up and give you a brief presentation, I wanted to cover a couple of items that our ever vigilant county council caught, a couple boilerplate recommendations that were left off your list. So we want to add two recommendations. A recommendation number six, which will be to direct the planning director to file a notice of determination approving the negative declaration for the project pursuant to sequo. And a recommendation number seven, which will be to designate the clerk of the board and the county planning director to be the custodians of the administrative record of proceedings for the project. So a couple items there we inadvertently left off our list of recommendations.
Okay.
With that, I'll, I'll invite Debbie up to give you a brief presentation.
Thank you.
Good morning. Again, good morning, Chairman Long and members of the board. I'm Debbie Malley from the Planning Division. This item has been before your board twice before and in consideration of time, I'm going to kind of go through it fairly quickly, but obviously if anybody has any questions, please do ask me and I'll pause and answer them. This is the rural tourism project funded by the Department of Commerce. Here's the purpose. I'm going to really just go through this fairly quickly because you have already seen this twice. This was the process. There were, there were draft amendments assembled by staff. The Rural Tourism Committee put in a lot of good work on this. We brought it to your board twice already, once on July 27th and once on November 9th. You suggested revisions. We incorporated those revisions into the amendments and took them to the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission suggested some additional revised wording and the county council suggested some clarification language, and I'm going to mainly focus on that in my presentation and just quiz really quickly through the rest of it. We looked at three kinds of revisions. Allowing bed and breakfast uses in the OS zone, revising the bed and breakfast definition to conform to the state definitions for farm stays, and adding three specific regulations for bed and breakfasts. And I just want to go to the second one here. This is some changed language where it says owner, where it says owner, excuse me, operator, owner and occupant. This originally read owner slash occupant, and it originally read in areas zoned open space or agricultural exclusive boarding houses and bed and breakfast inns must be operated by the owner slash occupant of the property on which they are located. And we now have it reading, I guess I can't, can't select here, must be operated by the same person or family who owns and occupies the property on which they are located. This clarified language was suggested by county council, so this is not the language that the Planning Commission saw, but we feel that it is in intent and in effect the same that they, that they approved. As far as retreats are concerned, we're just deleting the requirement that they be operated by a nonprofit organization. We would allow camps in the OS zone with a conditional use permit from the Planning Commission. We would add a sentence to the definition requiring that they offer a structured program of outdoor nature oriented activities, minimum site area of 50 acres. Camps would be allowed in the OS only, OS zone only if the property is in agricultural production, that is to protect sensitive biological habitats. There are specific regulations limiting the number of guests and staff that can remain overnight and the number of guests and staff that can be there during the day with an absolute limit of 500 guests and staff except for special events. We added additional language in, which your board heard because we're now expanding the definition of camp so that it would be not just a camp for entertainment, but also possibly a dual purpose working ranch and camp. We had to address the issue of when an employee is engaged in both camp and ranch activities. And so we just made a decision that half the employee's time would be applied to the staff limitation for camps. Here's some of the wording that the Planning Commission changed. Again, we had just said, I think, point five, and we changed it to one half and tightened up the language a little bit to make it clearer, but the intent of the regulation remains the same. There are also regulations limiting the number of square feet of structures. If you work all the math, it comes out to 100 square foot per acre, 100 square feet per acre. And the new regulations, if you see the lot, the bottom two lines there, the total square feet of structures remains the same despite the fact that the acreage has gone up. There is a specific regulation that says no single structure may exceed 25,000 square feet and the total area of structures used for camp purposes may not exceed 50,000 square feet. So that's an absolute upper limit there. And again, the same issue with regard to the structures as it was with the employees where you've got a dual use. If you've got a barn that's housing horses that are used both to round up the cattle and for dude ranches, then half the barn counts. It's just one half. And this again is language that the Planning Commission restructured slightly to make it a little bit clearer. They added this. There was a concern about the potential impact of motorized vehicles, so this is new language added by the Planning Commission. The camp facility project description shall address transportation to and from and within the project site, including the types of vehicles and road and trail locations so that as part of the conditional use, conditional use process, we can address this issue.
You can take your time.
We are adding an entirely new use under the heading of structures and facilities. That's botanic gardens and arboretum. Would be allowed in the OS zone but not in the AE zone with a conditional use permit from the Planning Commission. We are adding a definition to make sure we know what a botanic garden is. And specific regulations again for that, these are the condition, I'm sorry. This definition we got from the American Association for Botanic Gardens. We just cribbed it word for word from there. The specific regulations would require a minimum permit area of 50 acres. There would be limitations on the gift shops. I've bolded the language here. This is again what the Planning Commission did. The original site design restrictions mentioned avoiding negative impacts or avoiding adverse impacts. The Planning Commission reworded that to say, address and mitigate significant impacts. Again, not a significant change in the intent or the effect of the regulations. We would limit roof structures in botanic gardens to 500 square feet per acre with an absolute limit of 25,000 square feet per site. And the roof structures can only be information centers, kiosks, administrative offices, restrooms, a gift shop and maintenance storage facilities, greenhouses and hot houses being specifically exempted from those limits.
The last slide, you're saying there's no difference between avoid and mitigate regarding site design restrictions? Before it said avoid and now it says mitigate.
Hold on a second, let me just get the exact wording for you there.
Is this in our packet?
Yeah, this should be in exhibit 10. I'm looking at pages 22 and 23 of exhibit 10. Actually, the top of page 20, the top of page 23. For example, runoff of water, fertilizers, pesticides and herbicides and the like should be contained to, and it originally read minimize, I'll get the exact wording for you here.
Okay, that's, that's different than avoidance of native plant communities. That was the question, in natural habitats. One was avoidance is what you, it's indicated now, it's address and mitigate.
Okay, so you're, you're looking at natural plant communities. You're looking at section 35.3.6 where it says the use of non-native plants may be appropriate at some instances.
Okay, I was listening to your presentation.
Okay, I'm sorry.
And you had said in your presentation that where before it said avoid, now it's address and mitigate.
Okay, what I did was I collapsed three down. Originally it read runoff of water, fertilizers, pesticides, herbicides and the like should be contained to address, again, I'm looking at number nine. Hang on. Sorry, got it. Right. Thank you.
It also is address and mitigate.
It originally read citing and design of all facilities should avoid or minimize negative impacts. And now it reads address and mitigate direct and indirect significant impacts.
And where is that original wording?
Okay, it's in the Planning Commission resolution. That would be exhibit eight, page two.
Just offhand, I have to say I prefer the original wording, but go ahead with your presentation and I'll take a look at this. Thank you.
Okay, again, it's in legislative format. You can see it on the middle of the second page, on the middle of the second page of exhibit eight. So where it formerly said runoff should be contained to avoid negative impacts, it would now be address and mitigate significant impacts.
And I'm looking not at the runoff. I'm looking at one, you had avoid impacts on native plant communities and natural habitat. And this has been changed to address and mitigate. Thank you.
And then I had already gone over the roof structures in botanic gardens. There's a revised definition for festivals, animal shows and similar events. Basically, we're adding some additional examples, harvest festivals and historic reenactments and weddings. And there's an absolute limit. The previous definition, because temporary is defined as 30 calendar days or as set in the planning, in the conditions of the conditional use permit, the 30 days was not an absolute limit, but, but could be changed through the uses of the conditional use permit. This sentence would make that an absolute limit of 30 days not to be exceeded. And finally, there was a revision to the sign ordinance. This actually came up after the work of the Rural Tourism Committee. The current requirement is that an attached sign in the OS and AE zones has an absolute maximum size of 20 square feet. That's a little bit small when you're looking at, say, a packing house with 100-foot long wall. So the new requirement would be that you could have one square foot of sign area per two linear feet of wall length. The planning director could approve additional area up to 120 square feet, but that would have to be part of a complete sign program for the site. And it would be, you know, addressing all the various issues. And those were the changes that we're proposing to the non-coastal zoning ordinance for the rural tourism program. If anybody has any questions?
Questions at this time?
Can you just go in a little bit on these handling of sewage? Is that in here?
But that actually is under the jurisdiction of the Environmental Health Division rather than planning. The current requirements are that a bed and breakfast or a guest ranch is a commercial kitchen and a commercial kitchen may not be on a septic tank. I believe that's addressed to a certain extent in the staff report. Let's turn to that page. Environmental Health actually gave us some language on that. It's on page six of the letter to the board.
Okay.
Because the commissioners had brought this line, this issue up too. Current county regulations are that a commercial kitchen has to be on a sewer tank. It cannot be in a septic field. And the problem is that our regulations for septic systems are designed for single-family houses. I'm not really an expert on this. This is more of an environmental health issue, but this is the information that we did get from the Environmental Health Division to, to address that issue.
My question too.
Question, yes. Supervisor Park.
In November, when we looked at this regarding the maximum size of a sign, the original, what was proposed to us was 120 square feet. And the board chose instead to cut that in half, so the maximum would be about 20 by five-foot sign in open space. And that was, that was something, and so it sounds to me now we've gone back to a discussion that the board already had voted on.
I'm sorry, our, our recollection is that we agreed to one, our original proposal was one square foot of sign area per linear, one foot of linear wall length, a one-to-one ratio. And the board recommendation was to cut that in half. In other words, one square foot of wall length, one square foot of sign area per two linear feet of wall length. So what we did was we cut that down.
Okay. So it was cut, it was cut in half to 120 is what you're saying?
It was a sliding scale. What we proposed was a sliding scale of one square foot of sign per one linear foot of wall. And so now what we have is one square foot of sign per two linear feet of wall. So that basically cut the recommendation in half. Then there was considerable discussion amongst the board that they wanted to see issues of the sign design addressed. And so that's where we put in the provision that you could approve additional area up to 120 square feet as part of a complete sign program.
Okay. Okay, and I'm, I'm just looking at my November report that has the, the 120 square feet was the, what was written in the report. And I thought we had worked on that to reduce it, but.
Our, our recollection and our review of the minutes were that for the ministerial permit, the board had directed that it be a smaller sign and that would be the one square foot to two linear feet, going from the one-to-one to one-to-two. But that the board indicated that the 120 square foot sign as a discretionary permit, which a sign program would be, was acceptable. And so that was why that language remained.
Yeah, I know that we did work with that. Thank you.
Other questions? Should we go to public comments at this time? Thank you, staff. Appreciate the report. Rex Laird, you're just spending your morning with us this morning, aren't you, Rex? Welcome and thank you again for your work on this issue.
It's a pleasure. Madam Chair, members of the board, I'll keep my comments brief. We have a number of committee members that I know are going to comment. And some of those are actually in the process of doing what we're talking about. I have one overarching theme that I would, I presented to the Planning Commission that I would like to also present to your board. I really respect and admire the tightness with which you're trying to craft the language. With that, I think comes a caution in that in that process of trying to be as astute as you can and as tight as you can in your language, that you not wind up with the unintended consequences of giving the opinion that somehow or another, that the process is automatically going to be gained or that there is an element of lack of trust to the people that are going to apply. I'm not saying that you're saying that, but if you write this thing in such a way that you anticipate any way at all possible that can be gained, then in my opinion, human behavior will be that you'll turn people off and they, and somehow or another marginalize the opportunities that we have presented through some excellent work by our staff. It's interesting that a number of us that are on this committee, three of whom are here today, participating for some degree of time with the Ag Futures Alliance, and that's kind of crafted and shaped my opinion on this whole process. And so I've had somewhat of a different journey than maybe most of the people in the general public when it comes to this issue. public when it comes to this issue. And especially my journey is separate and distinct from Todd Coller and others who are in the enforcement side of it. And so if you're in the enforcement side of it, you would tend to write this as tightly as possible. I think the staff is to be committed in trying to achieve a balance between those two. So as you deliberate and you think about this process, I would like for you to keep it under consideration that this is a first step in establishing a new relationship between agriculture and the balance of the community. And so there's going to have to be a lot of trust building involved, and that's not to say that there's not going to be bad actors out there, but let's not let the minority rule the majority and squelch opportunities that we might have. Also, I would add that I don't think that ag tourism is going to replace the billion-dollar industry that we have, but as our industry evolves, it's certainly going to be more and more of a key element of that. And we've had previous discussion this morning about relationships between the city and the county, and I have this pet theory that this is one of the ways we're going to get the cities to finally buy into the value of agriculture, is when they see their temporary occupancy tax revenue go up, you're going to see a different attitude than you might see now, not the overt attitude, but the attitude that they have internally within their culture. And so there's a lot of opportunities here and there's a lot of neat things that we can do, so we have to be careful about how it is that we do it and the image that we give off and look forward to the testimony of the balance of the committee members. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Tim Cohen.
I think I got a parking ticket for being here three hours last time at the Planning Commission, so I'm hoping to avoid that today. I was debating whether to go to the three-hour parking or the full, and I think I made the wrong choice. But again, I want to really appreciate all the time and effort that the planning has put to this. It's really been rather pleasurable except for that parking ticket. But really, what I thought when I joined and was asked to be a part of this was that we were going to foster some creativity, some sustainability for farming and really allow farmers who are rather entrepreneurial by nature to expand that. And so I was really looking forward to that, and I think we accomplished that in many ways, and I think there's quite a few, or actually three items that I'd like to bring up that maybe we can discuss. I currently operate under two different conditional use permits, one for my inn, the Heritage Valley Inn in Piru, and another one for my equestrian center. Had this been in place where we could allow this, I'd probably operate under one CUP and cut staff's time in half, which they probably appreciate. Since we've been open for about three years as a guest ranch, we have doubled our business in the first year, and I'm happy to say in the next two weeks, we will do half of what we did in the prior year. I wish the base number was larger for those exponential activities, but they're not. But rural tourism is a business, it's a hard business. It's not a hugely profitable business, but it's something in addition to what we do. It's not a standalone business, it complements our agricultural operations. We've been also real fortunate. We were on the front page of the New York Times on February 13th and 14th, had a great article. We were featured in Sunset Magazine in September 2004. We'll be filming an episode for California Country TV April 6th with a family from San Francisco. And so it's, we've drawn a lot of attention to Little Old Piru and a great county, so it's something to be proud of. The issues that we've discussed with yourselves, also the Planning Commission, three items that I think need to be looked at again are the open space designation for a camp where it states that it needs to be in agricultural production. It's hard to quantify for, I imagine, for anybody to say what is agricultural production. I could put a cow on 1,000 acres and say it's an agricultural production. I don't think it's a game that we want to play with you folks. I understand the basis of it was so that there was not any damage to environmentally sensitive areas. Through the conditional use process, that's taken care of. I think a lot through the CUP process is taken care of. But again, just one more item, another hurdle to get over in order to promote tourism, I don't feel as of benefit. The other item, we have a 30-day limitation on events. I believe currently it's 60. And again, through the CUP process, I wouldn't want to be restricted until the actual event was analyzed. We currently have 60 days, and to cut it back through this process to 30 days doesn't tell me that we're promoting agricultural tourism. Just to give you, for example, in October of this year, if you were to do 30 days, you would have lost one weekend day event. The first was on a Friday, the 31st was on a Sunday. And if I was doing an Oktoberfest or had a pumpkin deal, I'd have to pick, do I not want to do the Friday or do I not want to do the Sunday? And you don't want to miss those weekend activities. That 30-day restriction would eliminate that. I think if you can give the planning department that flexibility during that process, it would be helpful. The other item is for bed and breakfast. I can tell you, as an operator of a 10-room inn, it's not a business. As an operator of a six-room bed and breakfast, it's not a business. It's an ancillary business. To have the owner operator restricted to be that person, we can't work, we can't work all day, we can't cook breakfast for the guests, we can't check them in, we can't make their beds, we can't tuck them in at night, and we can't market. We can't do it all. So the restriction of having the owner be the same person who's taking care of the guests, it's just not possible. Sometimes owners are in a corporation, sometimes they're a family. It just is not a prudent regulation. There's people that work for us on the farms that probably do a much better job of taking care of guests than we can. And certainly you'd want to put your best foot out front, put the right person in there. And if it's a ranch house that has six rooms and one of your people is living there, they certainly should be able to take care of the other five. It's just too onerous to have the actual owner be there all the time. So again, I think those are the three issues that the committee has. Those are some of the items that you changed when it was first presented to you. We presented the same issues to the planning and they suggested we come back to you. So again, I really appreciate the opportunity. If you can look at those three items, it would be helpful.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Craig Underwood.
Chairman Long and members of the Board, my name is Craig Underwood and I'm from Cameroo and this is my daughter Susanna. I come to, again, support the committee's recommendations and Tim's comments, and what I'd like to do is present you our view of ag tourism, what we're doing, and give you a little entertaining, hopefully, view of how we view ag entertainment. It was never my plan to include what we now call ag entertainment as part of our farm. It started 25 years ago when we were losing money raising conventional vegetables and the cannery wouldn't take all of our tomatoes. We started a produce stand in Somus and ran a ad in LA Times inviting the public to pick our Roma tomatoes directly from the field. At about the same time, Rick Breconier, whose farm we leased at Chirrojada, and was raising pumpkins for the public to pick in October. And Lynn and Alan Ayers were starting the Faulkner Farm Pumpkin Patch in Santa Paula. Today, this business represents one-third of our gross and at times a higher percentage of our net. We participate in 13 certified farmers' markets, operate two produce stands, offer pick-your-own fruits and vegetables 10 months of the year, as well as school tours, birthday parties, corporate events, special tours for seniors, package tours to tour companies. The biggest activity of the year is the Fall Harvest Festival in October. I have a partner and 12 full-time employees, which includes my daughter, building to about 100 part-time employees in October, which includes my wife. The farm now includes an animal center and a private picnic area that can accommodate 10 birthday parties a day on weekends and snack or lunch areas for the school tours during the week. These evolved because fruits and vegetables were not enough of an attraction to get people to visit us. We now have regulars that come every week or two. Mommy and me groups gather in the morning for a tractor ride and strawberry picking. Most of our strawberries and blackberries are picked on the weekends or by our school tours. About 30,000 to 40,000 children and parents come for school tours throughout the spring and fall. They're offered classroom time on fruits and vegetables, a horse-drawn wagon ride around the farm, vegetable or fruit picking, time in the animal center, and a private area for snacks or lunch. We're trying to entertain at the same time educating and connecting the kids with the farm again. Most children expect a farm to have animals, so we have animals. They are surprised that carrots are dug from the soil, and many parents can identify all of the varieties that we grow. We have to present the farm in a modern context so that it is acceptable, and it is surprising that the children will eat what they harvest when they might not if they just bought it at the store. Weekends, we put on three animal shows a day featuring farm animals. In October, we become a country fair focusing on our harvest, mostly pumpkins and squash, but including tomatoes, peppers, and everything else we are growing. We put on a craft show to start. Weekends, there is food largely provided by nonprofits. Our event is the Pleasant Valley Lion's second-largest fundraiser of the year. Moore Park and the Westlake Band, Boy Scouts, 4-H, and other nonprofits benefit. And then following October, the Moore Park Rotary puts on a Civil War reenactment which benefits their programs. Every child that comes out on our educational pumpkin tour gets a wagon ride, pumpkin, classroom experience, and time in the animal center. A small corn maze with a hay pyramid is fun and challenging. We have local groups that perform on the weekends. My wife puts together a temporary country store just in case our visitors want something more to decorate for the fall. Our farm is oriented to families with small children. We want them to have a farm experience, learn something, and have a good time. In 2003, the fire put a damper on the season, and in 2004, rain forced us to cancel about a week of tours and festival. Even this farm innovation is subject to the weather, we just can't seem to get away from it. We hope we can offer more at Christmas and Easter. People leaving in October ask us what is next, and it's our job to figure that out. Our objective is to make the farm an attractive place to visit because I would always like it to be a farm. This type of operation has allowed us a way to stay in farming while not being able to compete with large shippers of commodities. We recently met with 1,000 fellow family farmers from around the country in Boston to discuss our business. Agretainment is something that is solidly embedded throughout the country. Some farms provide large corporate facilities, bakeries, restaurants, and animal centers. We think it is a positive addition to the community and it certainly helps us have the ability to maintain the farm. Thank you very much.
Thank you, that was delightful, thank you so much, appreciate it.
Craig, I have a question real quick.
Question.
This is totally irrelevant, so just forgive me. What's the name of the brown billy goat that sits on top of the little house at the corner of Somus Road and 118?
Well, they changed positions, so it could be...
You only have one that's marked like this, it's more brown than the other three or other two.
I'll have to check that out.
Doesn't even know the name of his own goat, anyway. I did that because later on it'll be relevant to my comments.
Thank you. Delaney Ellis.
I want to know the name of the goat.
Madam Chair and other members of the Board, boy, how great to follow Craig, huh? I really don't have too much I have to say now. Both as a filmmaker and as a member of the Ag Futures Alliance, I am certainly dedicated to the preservation of the agricultural industry and preserving the farmland and open space in this county. So when I was having a chat with Rex one day, I said, boy, you know, having been an ex-travel agent, if the subject of ag tourism ever comes up, please put me on that committee. And it wasn't too long after that I was on that committee. You know, overall, I would say that what we were looking at in the zoning modifications were really what we like to call it Ag Futures wordsmithing. It was pretty much small changes, like a B&amp;B didn't have to be a cultural heritage site, it could just be a good farmhouse that could house five to six rooms of guests. And that's not going to make any motel chain or corporation jump right on the bandwagon to try and sign them up. So I think that there was clearly always the intent to make sure that production agriculture was not going to be interfered with at the expense, you know, of ag tourism or rural tourism. And if you look at the environmental movement in the country, I don't know that it would be as strong as it is if people couldn't go to the national parks, you know, or didn't have direct experiences with wildlife in different ways or weren't able to walk in those canyons. And I think that ag tourism or rural tourism, you know, combining the open space, is just an essential element to preserving what we've got in this county. We need people to take ownership of this land and to have a direct connection with it and for the children to continue to understand where, and unfortunately, some of the adults, to understand where their food does come from. And so I really think that this is going to be a terrific boon. You know, most farmers are too busy farming to even think about the headache of bringing guests in to the farmhouse over the weekend. But for those few brave souls who do, I think we need to go out of our way to support them and to support our ag industry. So we know Measure A didn't pass, so funding for conservation easements is having to wait for a while again. So I think that this is a way that we can help, I mean, we're right next to LA, to help make people be more conscious of where their food comes from and take ownership of this incredible industry that fuels this county. So thank you, and are there any questions?
Don't see any, and thank you. Thank you again for your work on this. That concludes the public comments on this item, it's before the Board. Supervisor Bennett.
Thank you. The first thing I want to do is, I thought it was very appropriate the way Supervisor Long complimented the committee, and I just would like to compliment all the people that served on that committee and put that time in. The second thing, and it relates to my first comment, which is a thank you, is that in my own mind, if you look, try to look at the big picture here, we're trying to do something unique in Ventura County. We've got this paradigm shift that we're not going to do what Orange County did and just pave over all the ag land, we're going to try to preserve it. And so a logical component of that is this rural tourism, to try to make it, try to find ways to keep it profitable and still in ag as we're going forward. That is, that by its very nature means that we're trying to balance some issues, you know, are we trying, do we err too far and turn rural tourism? And we had a proposal years ago, I think it probably set this movement back many years in people's minds, which was, we want to go in and rip out a whole bunch of ag land so that we can build an ag museum and an ag this and an ag that. And it got tarnished that it was really just a way to try to do commercial development under this guise. So I go back to the committee. Quite frankly, working with you as you interact with us here and in talking with you out in the community, you are building trust, and when you're trying to balance things because you can't pin everything down, you know, to the nth degree, to the extent that that trust is built, it makes it easier for all of us to be able to move forward. So I commend you for the way you've handled yourself in this thing, the way you've handled your frustrations with some of the things that the Board has brought up and just in general, your approach, the whole issue of the Ag Futures Alliance and that attempt to try to reach that balance. I would point out that if you're trying to balance something, then the question is sort of your philosophical bent is, where do you err? Do you err on the side of caution or do you err on the side of being a little bit more aggressive as you're out there? And I clearly recognize that right now, as we're rolling this out, this is erring on the side of caution. And so I don't want people to think that, you know, you think we think we're, boy, we're really pushing the envelope here. I think, in my mind, we're erring on the side of caution. And it is, in my mind, because the asset is so precious that if you lose it, it's hard to get it back, that I think that it is out there with regard to this caution. So I freely admit, until we implement it, we really won't know where all the bugs are in this proposal. We will find some as we implement them that we don't know about. You're pointing out bugs right now from your perspective, and, you know, and when Rex, when you made the comment about unintended consequences, I think we all recognize, there will be, you do something this complicated, there are going to be unintended consequences. So I'm completely open to... So I'm completely open to this coming back. Let's continue this as a dialogue as we try to fine-tune rural tourism to have it fit into this vision. And if we leave some things in the cautious mode and we can get that, both that trust level up and some track record that goes, "Look, you know, this isn't a problem," it makes it easier for us to be able to change it. Three issues are brought up, and I just want to make sure you know I heard them and trying to consider them, you know? The owner-occupied one, the 30-day, 60-day issue, and the open spaces ag-only. And I've got three thoughts on those. The first one, if I could have Mr. Stevens come up. In terms of the owner-occupied, you know, it can be presented as was presented, you know, you can't be there 24 hours a day, you know, trying to do it. And I'm going, well, I certainly don't think the person needs to be there 24 hours a day. That seems impractical. What's your interpretation of this and how it would be applied? And what does operate mean as we begin this process of trying to figure out?
Difficult to respond to it speculatively, but I would say that we would not, I would not interpret that language to say that the owner must, in fact, operate every nuance of the bed and breakfast. I think the intention was that it be the owner or family of the owner. I think that language was suggested, that kind of council was a real improvement because we do have family and family trusts and whatnot that are involved in farming. But that may be present on the site quite often, and some of you may have stayed in bed and breakfast as well. That is not their primary employment, for instance. They are doing other things. They have housekeepers and whatnot that are doing the primary business, but they are the owner of that business and responsible for it. So I would take that broader interpretation of the owner occupant.
Okay. Given that broader interpretation, I would, at this point in time, suggest, let's try this for a year, and let's see what we come up with. With regards to the 30-day, 60-day thing, it's the one thing that I've come in here saying, I've talked to some people about it, and I'm saying, I don't know where the rest of the board members are, but I'd be willing to talk about that here today, some in terms of that. And I'm not, I don't have a specific thing. I think we, like we oftentimes do, have a great, have great joy trying to design specific language up here. But anyway, there may be something, and I don't know if you have a suggestion.
Well, the interesting thing about that is that the language that we've been talking about is specific only to the temporary outdoor event category. Many of the permits that have been issued for this kind of activity, Mr. Underwood's included, are actually issued in another category within the zoning matrix. And so this limitation we're talking about wouldn't apply. It would only apply to someone who came in specifically for a fairly limited operation for a temporary outdoor event. We get very few of those, actually, and most of them are the true temporary events, let's say a Renaissance Fair that runs for a weekend. I think we have only one that we found in reviewing our files that I would consider of an ongoing nature that filed for that kind of a permit. So I think it's limitation, the application of it is going to be infrequent.
Okay. So many of these things fit through under, what is that other provision that they fit through?
A lot of, we have an ag promotional activities category, and we also have the large ag sales facilities. There's a number of other categories.
So many of these things could fit through those categories?
That's correct.
Right, okay. And then the open space ag only was the third thing that was raised by the speaker, and I guess that's one that was brought up. Supervisor Parks issues about, you know, about sensitive habitat and that issue. And in my own mind, if we stayed where we were and we found out how this process worked, you know, with a little bit more time under our belt, I think we could address this issue with more sort of factual knowledge about what's happening out there. So those are thoughts that I have about this point in time. I very much appreciate what's come back here and the fine-tuning with this at this point in time.
Absolutely. Others? Supervisor Michaels?
Yeah, just a quick comment. I appreciate the clarification on the 30 days, 60 days from staff. I'm still not uncomfortable with the total 60 calendar days per year, annual. I think 30 is extremely restrictive, and I wonder why the extreme caution, if in fact what you're telling me is there's very few of these that are ever issued. I, as I was, and I apologize, as I was walking out, I heard, I believe Supervisor Bennett saying that this should be flexible and we should revisit it and get it back. And that would be my one of several requests, but most importantly, if we move forward with this today, whatever little tweaks or no tweaks, we take what's before us, I would very much hope that this comes back officially at the end of one year to 18 months. And I don't know how much activity there's going to be one year. Might not be enough to let us know anything. But I do believe that this has, the important thing is this not be set in concrete. This has to be some, and I know it's a big deal to change these, but that's our job. That's what we're here for, is to make sure that whatever we're implementing and whatever regulations we set down, if they're not working, we fix them and we attend to them in a timely manner. And I tend to agree that if we're going to do this, we ought to err on the side of caution. And since it's like totally new, this is a huge step for Ventura County. Huge. And I'm thrilled with the work the committee did and the support it's gotten from this board because it's real hard for, sometimes for government to want to take that step into the unknown, uncharted territory, at least locally unknown and uncharted. I think everybody's done an excellent job. I would be willing, on those three issues, to look at them differently. If there's not support for the board, if they're more comfortable waiting until the first, whatever report comes back, I'm happy with that. But I would ask staff that as this is, as this moves forward and as ag tourism grows in our county, and I fully believe it will, I believe that this is going to be something that is going to grow, that this board be apprised of issues as they're happening. You know, even though I said I wanted a report in a year to 18 months, if in fact there's all of a sudden, over a six-month period, four or five applications that are all bumping up against the same barrier, bring that to the board, at least in the form of a memo, and let the board decide if they want to, if it's a big enough issue to address it individually, so that we can allow this to grow and to be viable, because I think it's a real answer to, as Steve calls it, the great experiment that's happening here in Ventura County. And without it, we run the risk of failing at all things. And so I will move forward the way it is. I could consider a few changes, and I'll wait for the rest of the board.
Comments? Supervisor Flynn?
Yes, thank you. This is really an exciting day, I think, that this is before us. What this does is establish a new, clean industry for Ventura County, number one. Number two, if you're sitting in some of the cities in our county, you begin to think, "God, we're being drowned by urbanization." And it isn't till you go outside of the cities that you begin to reflect on all of the agricultural land we have in the county. And so while urbanization seems overpowering, what we're talking about today and what you folks have done out there already, like the Underwood Farm, it brings an identity to Ventura County. I think that we, for some reason, have lacked that. And so we have an identity here as being a county that is urbanized to some degree, but farming continues. And this agricultural or rural tourism, as we've seen evidence of it today on the screen, really helps bring about a balance. So we have a balanced economy, as I see it. And the identity is so important, because when people talk about Ventura County, sometimes it's hard to give it some identity so that people can relate to it. And I think people can relate to this as well as some of the urbanization that we see going on the county. I think on the rules and regulations, I hope that we don't have a situation where people come back in two years or three years and say, "It just costs too darn much money to meet all these regulations." I hope some of those float to the top and then bring them back and see if we can take a look at them again.
Supervisor Parks?
I also want to thank the committee. You did great work, and you also seem to be a fun group to work with. Good personalities there. And I do want to compliment Mr. Cohen on that article in the New York Times. That was outstanding. It really, you can see, I think, benefited the whole county and gave a really good impression of Ventura County. It's kind of like this island of rural and agriculture in the sea of urban. So it was a very nice article, and you can see where that kind of industry could flourish here. And I also agree that we are taking a first step here, and it is conservative. And I think as we come back, and we'll ask, I'm sure, as part of the motion, to have it come back in a year or two and be able to look and see, make sure that, and fine-tune it if it needs fine-tuning, and see where we can, maybe more flexibility can be added. I also appreciate the Planning Commission's addition regarding the transportation, you know, having addressed the type of transportation to and from the project and within the site. I think that's important. I don't support, however, their change to address and mitigate the native plant communities, natural habitat. That wording, I think, is less restrictive than the one we originally had, which is to try to avoid that. So I would prefer that we go back to the original wording. It's not a great difference, but at least, you know, furthers that position that we want to make sure we, what we can do to avoid negative impacts to native plant communities and habitats. So I would just ask that we go back to the original wording on that, but I do support the transportation wording.
I didn't follow that.
I'm sorry. This is, you'll find it on Exhibit 8 in your packet. It's on page two. And this is what the Planning Commission, this is their resolution. So Exhibit 8...
Exhibit 8?
8. Comes between 7 and 9. And it's on page two of Exhibit 8. And on page two, it's...
Supervisor Michaels can only turn with one hand.
Okay. On Exhibit 2, I mean, on Exhibit 8, on the second page, it references Exhibit 2, page 21. And it shows you in the legislative format how the Planning Commission changed it to address and mitigate direct or indirect significant impacts of native plant communities and natural habitat. The original wording, I think, is stronger, which was, "Facilities should avoid or minimize direct or indirect negative impacts." So it's minor, but I think it just has, it has a better thrust to, you know, our objective is to avoid them, not to mitigate. So I would prefer the original wording that we had.
Supervisor Flynn? Supervisor Michaels?
Yeah. I guess if you're going to, if the board is going to agree to go back to avoid, this said, "Avoid negative." And I don't, it would have to be "avoid and/or minimize" because avoidance...
Right.
...may not be possible economically, and it may not even be really necessary, because to say that you will avoid is you will avoid.
I'm suggesting the original wording, which is "avoid and minimize." I'm not questioning that. I'm just saying, let's go back to the original wording.
Should be avoided and/or minimized?
Okay.
We need to have that kick in there where people, you know, through the discretion of either the planners or us, or the Planning Commission, can look at something and say, "Yes, you know, it is unavoidable, but it's been minimized, and there is some mitigation here." Because to say "avoid" as an absolute, then we have a real, I think, an issue. Maybe I'm wrong.
I don't have a problem with that. I would just ask staff, was this done for a legal reason that I need to know about?
Supervisor Parks? No, I wouldn't say for a legal reason. I'll just give you the thumbnail of the Planning Commission's discussion. They liked the language that they have proposed. They felt it was more in keeping with the language within SEQA that we're used to seeing within our environmental reviews and our environmental documents. And secondarily, and I think this gets to something of a comment that Rex Laird made earlier, they didn't like the suggestion of negative.
Bad advice.
They wanted to, they wanted to keep it as more what we were going to do is address significant impacts. They felt this language suggested that by virtue of locating this facility, there were negative impacts, and that wasn't a message that they wanted to portray.
Can I, can I just run something by you? I appreciate what you're trying to catch, or the spirit of the minimize, you know, try to avoid if you can. I like the idea, quite frankly, of having a tie into the SEQA. The thing I definitely think is the improvement is getting rid of the word "negative" and putting "significant," because that's what we really want to spend time on. We don't want to spend time on the non-significant. I'm just trying to see here on the dais if we could say, "Avoid, minimize, address, and/or mitigate." You know what I'm saying?
Adamoff.
You know what I mean?
Or avoid, and when that's not possible, minimize and address and mitigate.
Right.
But the preference is to avoid.
Yeah, I mean, that's...
But we can keep the rest of the words. But I would like to keep in the "should avoid."
Should avoid, or minimize, or address, and mitigate.
Okay.
Say it that way? I'm going to run it by staff real quick. Avoid, or minimize...
By saying that, you're back.
Or address and mitigate.
If I might suggest, I think from staff's interpretation and the intent of what you're doing, simply, "Avoid or mitigate significant impacts" would probably capture...
Would get it done.
...all of your concerns and would be...
Work for you?
That works great. Thank you.
Work for everybody? Avoid or mitigate?
Yeah, that's fine. I just know what the issues are in arguments. If the word "avoid" is in there, then you're going to have 50 people coming and testifying. It says right here, "Avoid," and...
But it does have a big "or" in there.
Well, capitalize the "or."
Okay, all right. In the spirit of the cooperation we're trying to build here...
We're going to get there.
If I might make some comments before we go to an action here. Again, thank you to the good work. And I leaned over to our chief executive officer here, and I said, "You know, when we ask people, ask residents, citizens to work with us on a committee, and they come to the Government Center, we should get them a parking pass." And he said, "You are correct," and he's going to handle that. So if it's a board-designated work topic...
Is that part of the motion?
Yeah. Then we should handle that. But I think the work has been extraordinary. I appreciate the conservative overview and being cautious. I frankly feel that we have in place already the regulatory roles under conditional use permits to deal with the open space for camps issue, and also to deal with the limitation on events. And the current 60 days hasn't been a major headache for folks, but then hearing from Mr. Stevens that it's one of those, it's a narrower niche, and it's not one that's called on frequently, I will certainly could live with a 30-day with some experience. I frankly still don't agree with having the B&amp;Bs have to be owner-operated restricted. I think that we have put conditions in here that cause for the B&amp;Bs to be limited to 15 guests, have no more than six bedrooms, be allowed only in, be allowed in AE zone and OS zone. I just, I think that when someone considers turning over what is basically a house or home to a B&amp;B operation, that's quite an investment, one that readily isn't done in just one year. And I think also one that you're not going to see a conglomerate corporation coming in and buying up a bunch of ranch houses to turn them into B&amp;Bs. They are not huge moneymakers. People really, those that I have visited, they do it for the love of the many other attributes of running a B&amp;B. So I don't have the same heartburn over it being qualified or restricted to an owner-operator. But I'll listen to what the board members have to say, and erring on the side of caution in this new venture we're off erring into.
What would you offer instead of the language? And I don't mean actual language, but are you thinking that, you know, I don't know where you're going with it. I would like to be supported because I don't think people have to be there.
The owner of the property should certainly have, and I would think that they would have...
Be responsible.
...a huge responsibility of liability and operations, but not the daily hands-on hands in that they have to be... hands in that they have to be the operator, but that they could bring in, you know, neighbor, neighbor Dick and Jane who say, "I've always wanted to run a B&amp;B," but don't have a facility. And they could bring in Dick and Jane to do that. They're not relinquishing their property or their responsibility and liability of that property and that operation on that property, but they also aren't in the business of, they aren't excited about a B&amp;B.
If I could, if I, if I could offer, I think you probably can almost, I just think the way Mr. Stevens identified that, that we're probably gonna be fine. If, if your intention is, you know, I think when people think of B&amp;Bs, you do think of the B&amp;Bs being, you know, somebody's home, somebody's, that the person, that there's some personal connection there. And I think that's what we're, what we're getting at. And given his fairly flexible interpretation of that, my guess is you're gonna get there. You could have, if you're taking all the responsibility, there's nothing that keeps you from working out a contract with the neighbors across the street who are gonna, gonna be, you know, running the B&amp;B with you at that point in time, you know, because they'll, you know, you, again, it's not day-to-day. So I, I would, I would, I would think that probably our experience, if we leave this in here, it does capture the one thing. If we take it out altogether, I think then you could lose that one flavor of the B&amp;B, which is the personal sort of connection. And so that's why I would encourage us to keep it in just for a while. Let us try it this way with this language. And that would be, that'd be my suggestion with, with that in terms of the B&amp;B. Because I appreciate, I mean, things can be pretty broad, the way Mr. Stevens is interpreting that and doing that. So I would, after hearing the comments, I would, in the spirit of trying to cooperate with the committee members who in good faith, I think, have been trying to compromise, I'd like to throw one compromise out that I think board members could live with, which is, in spite of Mr. Stevens saying, "Most of these that need to go longer are going longer under these other things," a pretty good argument was made about the temporary, you know, if somebody wanted to do the Renaissance Fair and then they can't do anything else, right? You know, and so, and then, also in the spirit of cooperation, 30 days could get you where you miss a weekend in October. So if we change it to 35 days, what I, the only change I would suggest we make in this thing, because it'd be clean, is that we say that our reference to 30 days on the temporary be changed to 35 days and that you could have two 35-day events in the course of the year, as long as the two events are at least separated by 35 days, right? It's not perfect, but it's, would, it would allow somebody who says, "Hey, I want this space to be kind of reserved for temporary stuff," but not, but at the same time not have somebody set up 60 days of just something in a, in an area that, that is, is a temporary kind of setup.
Madam Chair?
I had a question on that. If, if it's separated by a period of days, would it be two separate permits or would it be one so that if there's problems with the first instance, that it can be used to condition the second?
Whatever staff recommends at this point. Go ahead. Come on, staff, give us...
It, it, it could be either. It would depend, if they came in to apply for, for example, treating it as an annual permit, they, they could do both of those types of activities with one. However, if they only had plans at that time for one, they would come in for that one permit. They would then have to come in for a separate permit. So it would really be up to the proprietor as to how they'd want to apply for that.
And what about, could it be up to the board to decide that it should be two separate ones if it's in the, since right now the limit's 30 days, we're extending it 35 and now doing it twice?
Yes, yes, it could be up to the board. I'm not sure the wording, wording's rattling around in my head here. I can't come up with that on the fly here.
I'm just thinking if you have a nice area of open space and neighbors have never had any event like that before and they got it once and there were some problems perhaps of traffic or parking, that they should be able to be conditioned that on the next time that they're doing it instead of having it happen to them twice.
In your opinion, what's the best way to accomplish what Supervisor Parks is referring to?
The, we, quite often when we have permits of this nature, they have language within them that speak to complaints or problems or inability to abide by conditions. And if any of those circumstances occur, that their rights under the remainder of the permit can be revoked. We could insert that kind of a language within it and I think that that would address the issue.
Okay.
Other questions?
Yep.
Supervisor Michaels?
Question or comment? I'm not too sure that that's simpler, but it does accomplish something. And I, I can, I can live with that, you know, 35, I think it is an improvement. But back to the bed and breakfast. Because, and maybe I'm reading in the wrong place and I need to know if I am. I'm on Exhibit Nine, Page One of Eight, under Section 8107-43. Large section. Second bullet says, "Operator, comma, owner, and occupant in areas zoned open space or agriculturally exclusive, boarding houses and bed and breakfast ends must be operated by the same person or family who owns and occupies the property on which the boarding house or bed and breakfast or both are located." To me, that is not permissive. There is no option to bring the neighbor in and let them run it if you don't want to, as, who's ever living there, you know, actually operate. I mean, to me, that's pretty clear and there's no permissiveness in there. So I'm back with Supervisor Long. And in the interest of time and the people that are waiting in the audience, we don't necessarily have to wordsmith this today. You know, we could pass all of this with a request for language back next week or two weeks, whatever, to codify whatever changes need to be made because it's hard to do this wording on the fly and we always end up with something we're really not 100% happy with. So my suggestion, if I'm correct in that this is not lenient, my suggestion to the board would be that we pass it as it is, but bring back the two items, giving staff an opportunity to craft where they think, we think, we want to go.
Could I, if I could, I, I, just reading this, I just want to ask this question to try to clarify because I actually think we're there. If Supervisor Long is saying, you know, you know, you want the person that owns the property to be involved, this, the way I read this is it must be operated by the same person or family who owns and occupies the property, not the, not the house, but the property on which the boarding house is located. So you're saying if you, you have this big property here, you live in one house and you want the other house to be the bed and breakfast, this qualifies, right? Because you...
What if you live in the same house?
Both, either way. You can, you can do the same house, you could do that. So I see this as actually being...
Maybe I'm wrong. I could be interpreting it...
Is that how you see it?
What do you think? You're the attorneys.
Yes.
What do we pay you for?
Madam Chair?
Over there shaking your head? Tell me, tell me.
It seems that, you know, when you go to a place like this, a bed and breakfast place, your first question is not, "Are you the owner? Oh, you're not. Okay, I'll go someplace else." But it, Craig Underwood doesn't have a problem with this because he has this extended family, right? So, so maybe we can redefine with the help of our county council what extended family means here.
Well, I don't know about extended family, but, but the, the issue that I see is the use of the word "occupy" because if, if you're an owner and you live on one side of the road and you own a separate parcel on the other side of the road with a house, you aren't occupying that house across the road, you're occupying your home on the other side of the road. So you'd have difficulty fitting within this ordinance as it's currently phrased if you wanted that second house to be the bed and breakfast.
Is it, is it the sense of majority of the board? You want to, you want to, I think I'm hearing you saying that you want to make this more expansive. Is that right, Supervisor Flynn? There are three that want to do that, then. I think we should...
Could I ask, can we bring that, that section back? I mean, because it's like already after 12, we've got people out here. And I, knowing this board and its propensity to micromanage, we could be here a long time. I think it would be easier on everybody involved if, if we just ask staff if they believe they have the gist of our intent and bring it back for actual action at a hearing in two weeks or whenever. I don't care.
You would probably be well advised to continue it because otherwise the expensive publication and so forth would be encouraged.
Okay, so that's not a good option. Just continue the whole item.
If, if you want to save the money and so forth, continuance would be the way to go. If you just want to get something in place and then come back at a later date, not concerned about the notice and expense and so forth, then you could act today.
We should be concerned about...
Yeah, we should be concerned about that.
Could I suggest this is the motion to capture the spirit of that and that is that we continue this with the direction of the board that, that, I mean, with the direction to staff, that the board accepts all of this. We're only looking for two areas to change and that is the owner occupancy language with B&amp;Bs. And we know our staff is so talented, they can craft what we're looking for for when that comes back. And then also the modification of language on the 35 days so that we're sure we're not making a mistake. But we're not opening it up to 10 more things for us to kick around. Is that our intention?
That's the intention. That's why I said pass it and only bring those back. I don't want to go through the whole thing again.
Any other, any other identified areas for staff work to continue this item to bring it back?
And the change that Supervisor Parks made on...
The language on the mitigate, yeah.
But we've already agreed on that.
Right.
Excuse me, Supervisor Long, in, in, confirming with county council very quickly, we should continue this to a time certain so that we don't, I think for convenience sake.
Did we abide by that today?
Hey, didn't we try that once already?
But yes, we can.
The time certain is not legally required, but under the circumstances, it may be advisable.
Do we have to identify the time right now or just, just to a time? So that'd be part of the motion.
Okay. All right, there's a motion?
Second.
And a second to continue this item for those two areas of refinement to be brought back to the board and a time certain within two weeks. We're not meeting. We only have one more meeting, well, no later than that first meeting in April. That gives you three weeks. Does that work?
And if you, if you can bring it back, fine.
Because in, in two weeks, we're all gonna be gone on bed and breakfast tours.
That's right.
Yeah.
Is there agreement on that action?
Leaving our money in somebody else's camp.
Okay, seeing no objection. There you go. Thank you again, all of you who participated in the tourism. I apologize to our 11 o'clock and our 11:15 and our 11:45. Well, that's us, so we'll apologize to us, but thank you so much for your work. Board, can we plow through these next two?
Yes, let's do it.
All right. 11, our, our item 22 is the Boomerang 2005-06 campaign and welcome, Mr. Treasurer.
Hello again. Larry Matheny, privileged to be the chair of this year's Boomerang campaign and also privileged to be a member of the Board of Directors of the Ventura County Medical Resource Foundation. One thing I was thinking about as I was enjoying the discourse on the previous item on the agenda...
Enjoying?
You need to get a life.
Yeah, well, sometimes my tongue gets closer to my cheek than others, but I was thinking that we had a sizable number of people in the audience and still do for that matter, which I'm unaccustomed to. But one thing that we all have in common is that everybody in this room, everybody in this building, everybody who works for the County of Ventura, everyone who lives in the County of Ventura is benefited directly or indirectly by what the Ventura County Medical Resource Foundation does. And because the Boomerang campaign contributes in excess of $100,000 a year to the Medical Resource Foundation, then because of the work of the Boomerang campaign and the generosity of county employees, we are all joined together, who work for this wonderful county government, in the sense of adding to the security of the health care of our community. In my function as public administrator, public guardian, I can tell you that I appreciate the contribution that Boomerang and the Medical Resource Foundation provides in the mental health area. The behavioral health folks, as you know far better than the average person walking along the street, is, has been severely strapped for financing. And the Medical Resource Foundation provides funding for specific programs to behavioral health that, that they administer. So it's, it's with a significant sense of responsibility that I come to you and ask for your cooperation yet again to allow the use of county resources for our 2005, 2006 Boomerang campaign so that we can step forward to an even greater extent and help with the public health that all of us benefit from.
Absolutely. Any questions?
Uh-uh.
Comments?
Thanks for listening.
Board action?
Move the item and thank you for your effort.
Second.
Motion, second. Seeing no objection to that. It is so adopted and it is an excellent program and the Medical Resource Foundation does an outstanding job for us. Thank you so much for your leadership, sir. Thank you. Our next item is Item 1115. And if I might recap for those who are in the audience, the board hasn't even started the regular agenda items, other than under the policy matters 30 and 31, the board acted on those already. So our next item is our 1115 and we welcome for a presentation the Ventura County Sheriff's Department Crisis Intervention Team program. And welcome and thank you and so sorry it's been a little later than 1115.
Somebody asked me why I wore such a bright suit today and I thought, "I wanted to bring you a ray of sunshine."
Thank you with no windows in here.
You're delaying your lunch for us, so thank you for your time. My name is Joyce Wild and I am the Law Enforcement Crisis Intervention Team, CIT Program Administrator. And the good news today is that the CIT program is still alive and well and operating in Ventura County. I'd like to introduce some folks who helped make this wonderful collaborative effort happen. We have here the Sheriff, Brooks, undersheriff, chief, commander, almost, captain, and we also have members of the National Alliance for the Mentally Ill. Lou and Jim Matthews are still here, C.C. Casey. We have mental health consumers and others as well. And we also have folks from the police departments. And we have someone from the VA here as well. Thank you. And patients' rights. I'd also like to introduce someone who, without whom I just couldn't make this collaborative effort happen. It's a big effort to have a county-wide program and that's the program, CIT Program Assistant, Jennifer Borden. And of course, the illustrious Dr. Michael Ferguson, who was instrumental in starting, did I say that wrong? Instrumental in starting the CIT program in the year 2001, who'd like to say a couple of words on behalf of the Behavioral Health Department.
Good morning. Welcome. Welcome. Thank you. Members of the board, Mr. Johnson. I'm Michael Ferguson, the medical director of Behavioral Health, and I'm here representing Behavioral Health Department and Healthcare Agency in just expressing our ongoing continued support of this process. I wanted to stand up here to show that we are really involved. And thinking about this program and looking at over the history of it, this has been the amount of community cooperation and cooperation between the agencies, the police department and sheriff, has really been amazing. And I was reflecting on that, well, why is that? Well, because we all have the vision, the common vision of saving lives. And, and everybody, no matter whether you're a consumer or a mental health person or a sheriff or a VA, could get behind that idea. And I think that's why it's been so successful. I think as a county, we can be really proud of what we pulled off here. And I do want to communicate that the Healthcare Agency, Behavioral Health, we continue to be enthusiastically behind this and will continue to be so. Thank you.
That's great. Thank you. Ms. Wild?
Supervisor Flynn, last time I was here, you said that I have a fire in my belly about the CIT program. You can see why I still have a fire in my belly about this program. I sent all the Board of Supervisors a copy of the SAMSA final grant report at the end of last year. And that grant from the Department of the Health and Human Services funded the program for two years, from October of 2002 through September of 2004. The SAMSA grant final report illustrated that we did meet our goals for the CIT program and training. The CIT program is correlated with increased safety and a decrease in the use of force countywide with people in crisis and the mentally ill. More often than not, these police contacts are characterized by a talk-down rather than a takedown. One of our goals was to train 20% of patrol deputies, officers, and sergeants. We went above and beyond that by training 40% of patrol and we trained 25% of public safety dispatchers, who then go back and let the rest of the dispatchers know about the program and the request for a CIT-trained officer. Since December of 2001, there have been 13 CIT Academy trainings, 40-hour trainings, with almost 400 people trained. Almost 350 of these are patrol. When the SAMSA grant ended, there was a memorandum of agreement signed between... When the SAMSA grant ended, there was a memorandum of agreement signed between the five police departments and the Sheriff's Department to pay for the CIT administrative positions of Jennifer Borden and myself through June of '06. This demonstrates an extraordinary proactive position law enforcement in Ventura County has taken with the CIT training and program. I haven't found another such agreement in the United States. The CIT program continues with ongoing 40-hour trainings held three times a year, February, June, and October. There are CIT stakeholders meetings a month before each training. These stakeholder meetings include individuals from the Sheriff's Department, each of the police departments, the Behavioral Health Department, NAMI members, mental health consumers, and individuals from other mental health and medical agencies. There are also quarterly mental health update trainings conducted by Jennifer and myself at patrol briefings countywide, from Ojai Police Department to Simi Valley Police Department, anywhere from 6:00 in the morning till 9:00 at night. We stay busy. In addition to conducting trainings, Jennifer and I spend a great deal of time educating people to what is being done today by Ventura County law enforcement in regard to supporting the mentally ill members of our community. Jennifer and I also spend time on a daily basis linking individuals with treatment using information provided to us on CIT summary cards and directly by concerned peace officers. And there continue to be held biweekly interagency meetings that are hosted by the Behavioral Health Department and began in September of 2003. The intent of these interagency meetings is to link individuals with the mental health treatment and support that they need. So that's our update on the CIT program and training. Do you have any questions for either myself or Dr. Ferguson?
Are there questions?
Let me just say, you still have a lot of fire in the belly.
That's evident, isn't it? Well, it's a terrific program, and it's something we can really be proud of. It's very unusual in the United States, although it is growing in the United States, CIT training.
Well, and significant statistics, and you always look for that, to be able to quantify and qualify what success you've had with a program like this, so incredible statistics. I see Lou Matthews come up behind you. Is that backup Lou?
I just wanted to tell this story. She presented at our NAMI California Conference last year, and she was a knockout success. But most of all, I was very proud of this county, because we have an incredible program going. It's really, I think, beyond the Santa Clara that started this whole thing. I think we're about to go beyond them, and so I was very proud. I had many people come up to me and comment on Joyce and the program. Thanks.
Good. Other comments or questions?
Just a quick comment. At the National Association of Regional Councils meeting, the last meeting that we had, this issue is big on the radar screen of most of the regional councils, and regional councils in the other part of the country can be very different. Some of them do a lot of the Health and Human Services things on a regional basis that we don't do in this state, just because of the way the state operates. And I had taken the report with me, and it was amazing how many people were interested in what we were doing here, and the first question out of most of my elected colleagues was, how in the heck did you get them to cooperate and even talk to one another? And I just stood up and said, in our county, we don't have to make anybody do anything. They do it because they care. But I wanted you all to understand how huge this issue is across the nation, and very few people that I've spoken to have made half of the progress that we've made. So, you know, it's kind of nice to go out of your own state and be able to puff up your chest and brag a little, and so thank you all for all the work you've done.
Excellent work to the collaborators. Thank you.
It's been an honor and a pleasure. Thank you very much for your time.
Supervisor Bennett, one comment.
Just want to use this opportunity to remind us that we only read in the newspapers the times that it fails, and we don't, and for the sheriff and all of the deputies, if we'll just pass it on, that a day like today reminds us that there are so many times we never ever hear about the success.
Jennifer and I report reports on a daily basis. We have officers out there who you'd think, from what you read and hear, talk to them, they're functioning out there like social workers. They have big hearts.
Supervisor Flynn?
Yes, if we could adopt as a motto, "Talk-down versus takedown." Talk-down is so great. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you, sir.
Thank you for the presentation. We appreciate all your work.
I also just, I wanted to extend my thanks for the program. My thanks also to our sheriff, in that, you know, we were looking at a smaller percentage of trained, and being able to raise that bar now up to 40% is great. We only have another 60% to go, the way I look at it, but I understand that we have to take, you know, officers and put them through training, sometimes take them off the streets, so it's an important thing to do, but it's, I know, a difficult thing to do, but won't that be something if we can get 100%? And I love the idea that you're also doing the dispatchers, because that can assist a lot, I'm sure, before the officers get there.
We do an eight-hour training with the other officers. I don't know that the 40-hour training is really right for all of the officers, but in some counties, they are shooting for 100%.
That's great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, board members, we have a challenge. It's 12:20. We haven't had lunch. We've been sitting here all morning. We have quite a bit of the agenda left to do yet. What is your pleasure? Shall we try to plow through this, or take a lunch break, come back at 1:00? Do some closed session while we're in there? Pardon me?
Plow?
Plow.
Hurry.
Oh, yeah, I need a break. I need a break here. Okay, let's take a five-minute break, and then we'll come back and see what we can get accomplished.
Eliminating the local biases, I don't see any, in any event, the Sacramento politics that were mentioned by Ms. Long. I do find that in the last month, finally, the Unification Committee, the petitioners, in the last three weeks have finally put together some information regarding the fiscal effects, the operating effects of a unified district. However, they only presented facts, their view of the facts, for a one-year period and chose to turn their backs on a broader financial analysis. Now, also, last Wednesday, Ms. Berg, who I understand was here earlier in the day, made comments saying that the Oxnard Union High School District would not build the next new high school in Camarillo, they would build it in South Oxnard, which is patently false. As of November of last year, Dr. Davis made that presentation. The point I'm making is AB 780 is premature in shortcutting this process because we still have not gotten any sort of an idea from the unification people as to what sort of a school they plan to build. They have not ever presented that. It is premature to shortcut the process. The State Board will meet in September and will apply their analysis to this and give complete information. That will also give us time to take this information that is incomplete and still not presented to the voters so that we can have a balanced view on both sides of the issue. If you do not reconsider your vote from this morning, you will be disenfranchising people in Oxnard, you will be disenfranchising people in the unincorporated areas that Ms. Long says that she represents. She made that presentation at the Oxnard, at the Camarillo City Council meeting, and it was not true. Ms. Long knows me for many, many years. At her fundraising event at Danny Villanueva's house last fall, I implored her to please be a person to mediate this situation and to bring us all together so that we wouldn't get into the hassle that we have. She chose to ignore that. She chose to ignore the people that are here by changing the schedule and having the vote early. I don't, I just question why the people who were the petitioners for unification were here early. How did they know that they should be here? The other people on the other side of the story didn't. That's why, in an angry way, Ms. Long, and I've known you for years and we've been friends, in an angry way, in a burst, I said, "This is a railroad job. I don't want you people to look like you're Amtrak engineers." I think you should reconsider, give this process a chance to get all the data out, give the state people a chance to get back on this, and then we'll come to a vote for all of the people. Thank you. I really appreciate getting a chance to vent. I'm not chewing on you, but this is now a chance for us to get this thing onto a factual basis, not onto an emotional basis. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chair. Dr. Gary Davis.
Thank you, Supervisors, for allowing me to address the board after you've heard the issue this morning. I do apologize that I wasn't here. I did call yesterday and was informed that Item 31 would be this afternoon, otherwise I would have been here this morning. My point is, Gary Davis, Superintendent of the Oxnard Union High School District, is just this: As you have considered AB 780, just to reiterate and for the record, the official position of the Oxnard Union High School District has been one of neutrality, feeling that the voters of the attendance area should be the ones to decide, finally, the best governance structure for educating their high school students. While I say that, the Oxnard Union High School District, since the initial consideration of unification, has been steadfast in its insistence that this petition be heard by the State Board of Education, and if supported by that body, then the area vote would be the voters of the Oxnard Union High School District at large rather than some smaller unit within that attendance area. So I appreciate your letting me have this opportunity and ask that you do keep this in mind as you perhaps further consider this particular resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Dick Yarquez.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Supervisors. Thank you for the time that you're giving me here. I want to refer to my notes because there's many issues that I have some concern about, but my, two issues on AB 780. AB 780 is, well, in parts of it, it says that they're going to restrict the vote to a certain area. So Supervisor Bennett, Supervisor Long, and Supervisor Flynn, people in your area will be denied the opportunity to vote. And I know there's all legal leads as to how it affects them and so forth, but your people and my people are being denied the right to vote. Now, let's forget, just take aside, Winyemi, Oxnard, Al Rio, just put that aside, the people in Camarillo are being denied the right to vote. I understand, and I've heard, that this is not an issue. Our counsel, Mr. Dr. Griffin, disagrees with that, and the fact that there's going to be very serious challenges to the voting area. Let me just also say, in addition, if, I know maybe you haven't sat down and read that bill, all these things put in front of you, but in that bill, there's a couple of sentences in there that baffle me. One of them that says that the county committee, where 780 is pushing all this to the county committee, the county committee can amend, and let me see, say exactly what it says, "The county committee can amend things on exceptional situations." If that's not open-ended, ladies and gentlemen, I don't know who it is. The resolution itself by Supervisor Long, I read it quickly this morning, and the gist of it to me was that we want local people making local decisions. I might remind you that the county committee, people on that committee, live twice as far Camarillo than I do and other people in this area. So I'll be quick here, and I'd like you to reconsider that resolution, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Dolores Val Rains.
Oops. Either I'm too short or the microphone down. There we go. Thank you. I did have some prepared remarks, and I thank you for the opportunity to say them. Madam Chairperson, Member of the Board of Supervisors, I am Val Rains. I'm a 45-year-old resident, wish I was 45 years old, 45-year resident of Camarillo. And in case some of you might be wondering, I am married to Ted Rains, and he would have accompanied me here this morning, but he is presently in Sacramento fighting another issue, which is brack your base closures. I have three points regarding this resolution. And as I make my remarks, I hope that those that voted on the prevailing side, Ms. Michaels, Mr. Bennett, Ms. Parks, and Ms. Long, might consider a reconsideration of this question because there are some points that were not expressed. Under AB 357521, which is subsection C that you quote in your resolution, and it's before you, there were various government agencies that were listed as those that could render a resolution. The first agency that was listed in that ed code is that of a city council. Last Wednesday evening, the Camarillo City Council approved a resolution on a 4-1 vote, and it would be sent to the County Committee on Reorganization. Because of that action, I question whether the resolution before you this morning instead of this afternoon was one that might be considered somewhat repetitive and redundant because only for one reason, it did differ in some of the language that was under your resolve, and that is my second point. The constitutional right that is guaranteed to everyone to vote. According to your section of resolve, it mentions that the question of unification be submitted only to the members and the voters of Pleasant Valley School District, of which some of you know I served for almost 26 years. And the statement was that these were the most uniquely affected by unification. I would respectfully differ with that statement in that the final study that was presented by the County Committee on Reorganization in their February 18 report, prepared by Caldwell, Flores, and Winters Incorporated, made the following statement. They presented findings that demonstrated that criteria nine, the financial one, was not met. It stated that the Oxnard Union High School District could suffer, and this is a quote, "a negative fund balance of $16.6 million." I would say, and I would submit, that this figure qualifies as a, quote, "unique impact of unification," and it is definitely on the students of the Oxnard Union High School District. On a personal note, I am most grateful to my immigrant parents and my grandparents who drilled me incessantly as I was being raised in Indiana on the rights and the responsibilities of that wonderful constitutional guarantee, the right to vote. It belongs to everyone that is affected by any issue. My third point refers to some misinformation in your cover letter. I personally contacted three sources in Sacramento yesterday. Mr. Larry Shirey of the Department of Education, whose department is presently studying the submitted original petition, and he referred my questions to Ms. Debra Franklin, education policy consultant with the State Board of Education, and I spoke with Ms. Vicki Evans, the administrative assistant to the State Board Executive Director. For your edification, I submit the following information. There presently are eight confirmed members seated on the State Board. According to their bylaws, six constitute a quorum to move action. There is a student member who does not have voting rights. There are three vacancies, and only three, and they are anticipating that the governor will appoint them by the May meeting. Those appointees become full voting members and have one year within which they can be confirmed. The original petition, which was submitted to the Superintendent of Schools in August of 2003, will be tenatively heard in September of this year and hopefully by a full complement.
If you could please sum up.
I certainly will. I've gotten to my last paragraph. Thank you. I am having difficulty, and I still have difficulty, understanding why this resolution is before this county body and would urge, even though it's a little late, you to carefully consider what your action was and perhaps reconsider that motion at this time, and thank you.
Thank you. Sandy Rao.
Thank you. My name is Sandy B. LaRao, and I live in the unincorporated part of Camarillo. I would love to be polite, and thank you for the opportunity to speak to you, but I'm not going to because I'm really angry that my opportunity was taken away from me. I was supposed to speak before you voted, not after you voted, and this little piece of political ledger domain from this morning was beneath you. Mr. Bennett, you have been my hero. Thank you for your votes in the past. I think you haven't done your homework, perhaps. Check this group, please. This is the same group that put money and time into trying to defeat Measure 8 for all of our students in this area. Is that for the good of our community, of our county? I don't think so. This group has Beautiful Blue, "Unify Now" t-shirts, they've got money. I feel like it's been David and Goliath from the very outset, and I hate to do this, but I'm just a citizen, so by God, I'm going to go ahead and do it. There's some political conflict of interest going on here, which is why we have been begging for the process to be at the state level. There is a paid political consultant, someone who does that for a living, who is helping the pro-unification movement. That same person has worked on the campaigns of one of yourselves in this august body, as well as Dr. Wees. Can we get really, really rational debate over this when that is the case? This is one of the reasons why we have begged for this to go to the state. There are times, the Federalists had this argument at the very outset of this country, "There are times when a slow and cumbersome bureaucracy is in the best interests of the people so that the tyranny of the majority does not happen." This is one of those cases. I feel block-bulldozed and like I've been in the path of a juggernaut, and I'm just a citizen. I'm just a citizen with a student in school now, and I've had two students in the past. Those students have been educated beautifully by the Oxnard Union High School District. We are not in a crisis. There is no reason to put off the building of a brand-new, beautiful high school for Camarillo because of ideology, excuse me, which says that unified district is the best. If you bother to call the State Board of Education, you will find, they do, in fact, say, as Ms. Long's resolution, that a unified state is the best. Why? Look under the surface. It's because it's fiscally the easiest thing for the state of California. They have to pay less for a unified district than they do for a high school district. This district gets more money per student than does a unified district. That is the simple monetary fact of the matter. That is why California says, "Let's go ahead and unify everybody." There are circumstances when that is not good. I believe that part of our obligation for our high school students is to enlarge their world, not to shrink it. This is the perfect way that has been done. They have been in a small district for their elementary school, they move on to a slightly larger world that encompasses the real world. It has been invaluable for my children, invaluable. I do not want that taken away because somebody believes that local control, which is nonsense in any case, sounds good. I'm sorry, my students cannot be made to pay because it sounds good. Thank you.
Dani Carillo.
My name is Dani Carillo, and I'm the District 17 Director for the League of United Latin American Citizens, LULAC. We're the nation's largest and oldest Hispanic civil rights advocacy organization. Our mission is to advance the economic condition, educational attainment, health, and civil rights of Latinos in the United States. As such, LULAC has been monitoring the Camarillo High School unification for some time now, both as an educational and social justice issue. We are concerned that the resolution before you will be used to further the wishes of only a segmented population of families that will form the new district without properly addressing the wants of the families that currently live in the Oxnard Plain and attend Rio Mesa High School. We are also concerned that this resolution is being pushed so as to circumvent normal state education procedures and to speed the unification process along in only one of three test counties that has a specific expiration date, when in reality, anybody may file an appeal, which will only cause delays, thus prohibiting the Oxnard Union High School District in beginning the construction of much-needed new high schools. We feel the effects of the new proposed district will contribute to ethnic segregation among the high schools, Camarillo and Rio Mesa High School, and an acceleration of Oxnard Union High School District to an all-minority-majority in violation of Education Code Section 35753, Subdivision A4, which requires that, quote, "The reorganization of the district will not promote racial or ethnic discrimination or segregation," end quote. LULAC will also seek and call for an investigation as to whether taxpayer funds were used in any form to lobby and promote this reorganization proposal. We ask that you let the normal process continue, encouraging open dialogue amongst all those affected without influence by local, noneducational governing boards. Thank you.
Mito Marai. Okay, well, we opened this up to have public comment. Let's see if she shows up in a minute or so. Okay, I thank you for your public comments. Any board additional comments?
I'd like to ask a county council question. What steps does one go through for reconsideration on this board?
Well, the most difficult situation that arises is what is apparently being thought of here, that is reconsideration at the same meeting long after the matter has been considered. The preferred method is to have reconsideration at a separate meeting so that there is notice of the reconsideration. We have in the past, in certain circumstances, said, "Well, okay, you can go ahead and reconsider at the same meeting." And I would say, yes, you could make a motion to reconsider now if you wanted to. That is not the preferred method, as I mentioned.
Here's what I'd like to offer to the board. Next week, I'd like to bring a reconsideration issue, put it on the agenda for the board to discuss. I think that what the county council, the county council's point is, we have some people here now, but we don't have all people here who may be interested in the issue. So that will be my action for next week's agenda, and I'll ask the county council to help formulate the right language to put it on the agenda.
Madam Chair.
Yes. As I understand Robert's rules and ours, it has to be someone who voted in the affirmative to ask for the reconsideration. Mr. Flynn did not. How would we handle that?
Actually, that is not presently part of the board's rule for reconsideration. That is a proposal that is pending. The CEO's office has a draft policy that has not yet been considered by the board.
I find that unusual, since two or three years ago, I was prevented from trying to bring something back. At any rate, I'm not going to go there. I'd like to make a couple of comments, and I know that Supervisor Bennett would like to make some comments. First and foremost, it bothers me greatly when people come in and cast aspersions on an action of this board, knowing full well that unless it's a time certain, in which case we were like an hour late on case we were like an hour late on a couple of them anyway, that there is ever a guarantee of the time something will be heard. And I doubt very seriously that any of the board offices or the clerk of the board said, oh, it'll be in the afternoon. The reality is, if you wish to be here for an item that's on the agenda, you accept the responsibility to be here, because this board never knows how its schedule is going to go. It is now 10 minutes to 1:00. We have not taken a break. We were late with our time certens. We did move some items. We do that routinely. And so to say that there was some big political something or other going on and that this was all done to benefit one group or the other is extremely unfair and, quite frankly, unprofessional and uncalled for. This is, yes, a very emotional issue, and I understand that, but to waltz in here late and say, well, we were told it was the afternoon, I don't think that's fair. I don't think it's fair to this board. I believe that this board, every one of us, and I know Mr. Flynn voted in the opposite of the rest of the board, and that's good. We're not a rubber stamp. But I don't believe there's anybody on this board that didn't seriously consider what was before us. And Mrs. Rains said that, you know, what the resolution said, well, she stopped short because the next sentence after saying that it would be Pleasant Valley School District as the most uniquely affected, yada, 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 also, that the question of unification be submitted to the voters of such other districts or areas that choose to be included in the district or upon whom the county committee determines that the unique impact of unification requires that they be allowed to vote on the question. So it was a little unfair to stop short of the entire purpose of the resolution, which was to be inclusive to those areas that would be impacted. We, as a matter of fact, had quite a discussion on who would be allowed and would it be restricted. So, you know, I think it's a little unfair to jump to conclusions and make public statements unless you were here listening. Now, I fully understand you feel disadvantaged because you weren't here, and that's fine to so-state and ask for us to listen to you. I have no objection to that, but to say that any one of us did this, you know, through some collusionary process, I think is not fair. And so, you know, because I, for one, yes, there's areas of my district that could be affected, but this isn't hugely my area, but I looked at it because I was concerned. And yes, I do believe in local control, and that was why I forwarded it, and I believe that the processes are in place between now and whenever this happens for lots and lots and lots of continuing public discourse. So I don't know what the rest of the board is going to do. I apologize if you weren't here. I apologize if someone did give you the wrong information, but historically, this board has taken non-time certain items at the will of the board in order to move the agenda.
Supervisor Bennett.
Thank you. Process has always been something that's been very important, I think, to all of us here to make sure that we try to engage in a fair process, and with that being the case, I'm going to suggest that we do reconsider this and probably address the issue of, since I was in the affirmative, that we reconsider this so that this testimony takes place before we, so we've heard this testimony before we vote on this particular issue. I think that that's probably the best thing for us to do. My own sense is, these are the people that came knowing this thing was on the agenda today. Other people came knowing that this item was on the agenda also. These are the people that, I think, deserve to have the public comment. So I'm willing to do that today as we move forward. I also want to emphasize that even decisions on whether we reconsider or not will be interpreted as having a bias one way or the other, and I just, I don't in this issue. I am, as the superintendent said, neutral in terms of what happens on this particular issue, and I think it's unfortunate that we perhaps are being perceived as that not being the case. So I think it would be better for us to have the motion to reconsider, and the county council is saying we can do that today, is that I would make the motion for us to reconsider right now at this point in time.
I'll second that. So we can put it on the table.
The only question I raise is the one I think county council was implying at least, and that is, we have a group of people here. The group that was here this morning is not here now. I really think it would be more prudent to have everyone come who's interested in this issue and testify. We're kind of doing it in a piecemeal way, and that's really not good government, I think. That's why I prefer the reconsideration take place next week.
Yeah, I just don't see the rationale there. These people are here. Those other people were here when we took the action once before. Everybody that wanted to testify on this thing today has now testified. We've heard all of that testimony. It is, I think it's time for us to...
Yeah, excuse me. The other thing is, the district brought up some issues that I'm not sure each of us really knew and were well-informed on this whole issue, especially on the who's going to vote, you know? I raised it, received an answer, but it may not be the accurate answer. I think it would be better, more prudent, more good government if we took our time now, put it on the agenda for next week. I'd like to do that for reconsideration, and vote on it then, and that would give the entire public, the people from El Rio, they probably don't even know this is on here because it was not set at a time certain, and it was not identified in the press, I don't think. And the people in Oxnard, the people in my district are kind of left out on this issue, and the people in many parts of Camarillo. Good government is a government that invites the people to participate. We're not doing that.
Well, I would differ with you there because your point is just exactly why I brought this forward, because this invites the people to participate at the local level before a county reorganization committee that is made up of local people who are appointed by the board members and otherwise. So you have your representatives from all five supervisory districts on that county committee, in addition to the Superintendent of County Schools, and in fact, the county committee is in place and heard the first round of this unification request and sent it forward to the state, saying that it met all the criteria except for the one financial criteria. And so there was trust at that time in that county committee, and my intent of bringing this back by resolution via AB 780, and now we're discussing the item, so I'm going to have to back off because we have to decide with a motion and a second on the floor to reconsider it now. Is there support to do so now? Aye.
Oh, so you're calling for the vote?
Yeah.
I made the motion, yes.
Okay, so we'll reconsider it now. So I'd like to, again, we have another speaker card who was submitted. She did come in the room, and I welcome your comments. Mito Marai.
Thank you. I apologize for the lateness. I was a little bit unaware of the circumstances here because I'm actually new to this area. Good afternoon. My name is Mihom Marai, and I'm a staff attorney with the California Rural Legal Assistant, also known as CRLA. Since 1965, CRLA has raised its powerful voice in the courtrooms, in the classrooms, and in the fields. We have shown farm workers and poor people that the law can be a friend and that those responsible for enforcing the law can and should be held accountable. We are here today because several community members have come to our office to express serious concerns about the proposed resolution, which asks for you to initiate AB 780 review process for the Pleasant Valley School District slash cessation program, proposal. Although the resolution does not require you to take a position in support or opposition to the cessation proposal, in essence, it does ask that you bypass the procedures that are currently in place, namely that the State Board of Education make the decision as to whether or not the cessation proposal meets the statutory requirements of Education Code 35753. Upon request by community members, we have conducted a preliminary investigation on this issue and find that the cessation program may not meet the nine statutory requirements as prescribed in Education Code. Although I will not discuss at length our findings, I would like to share with you some preliminary thoughts. First, based on the review of the feasibility report, the cessation of Camarillo High School from the Oxnard Unified Union High School District may promote racial or ethnic discrimination since there will be a decrease of approximately 10% of Caucasian students in the district, where presently there is only 20%, 20.8% of Caucasians. The cessation will have a dramatic effect at Rio Mesa High School, where there'll be a decrease of 16.3% of Caucasian, making the student population of Rio Mesa to be 76.6% Hispanics, 14.4% Caucasian, and 9% other minority. In addition, the cessation may significantly disrupt the educational programs in the proposed districts and districts affected by the proposed reorganization, violating Educational Code 357536. For example, if the cessation was to occur, 70% of the Caucasian students would withdraw from Rio Mesa in order to attend Camarillo High School in the newly proposed district, and also they may attend the new school that is being proposed to be in the Camarillo High School District. This would result in a reduction of 36.2% of the total enrollment of Rio Mesa High School. As the, quote, "Update on the analysis of the racial and ethnic effects of the petition to unify the Pleasant Valley School District states, quote, 'This reduction alone will make Rio Mesa High School by far the smallest comprehensive high school in the district and will require relocation of students to Rio Mesa in order to balance enrollment,' end of quote. This obviously would disrupt the educational programs since many students will have to be relocated in order to balance the student enrollment of the remaining eight high schools in the Oxnard Union High School District. Rather than continuing to discuss how this proposed cessation may likely result in litigation because of violation of the Education Code, I would like to ask that you please reconsider this issue, not just in the context of the proposed resolution, but in the bigger picture, namely, the effect that this resolution will have on the cessation proposal. I ask that you do not prematurely pass this resolution," but I guess it did pass, but whoops, "without further inquiry into the effects to the students and parents of the Oxnard Union High School District and the Pleasant Valley District as well. By approving this resolution, you will be circumventing the state procedures in adopting a reorganization plan. Although I agree with Ms. Kathy Long in the importance of, quote, 'Residence rights for access to the process at the local level,' end of quote, I caution you as to the intent of this resolution. If all residents, including those from Pleasant Valley School District and Oxnard Union High School District, are allowed to vote on this plan, then perhaps it is the way to go. However, if only certain residents are allowed to vote on the cessation plan, is that in the best interest of our students? And I also speak because prior to an attorney, I was a teacher four years in LA. You were elected to represent all of the communities of Ventura County. Please don't let the desires of a few control the educational opportunities of the voiceless students in Oxnard. Thank you for your time."
I'm not taking any more cards. I will take that one card. I appreciate it. I'll take it. Come on, John. Sure, sure. John Alameo.
Good afternoon. My name is John Alameo. I reside in Camarillo at 577 Cortez Golondrina. I really didn't have any intent of coming up here to speak today, but I've been listening and felt I needed to. We seem to be really rushing with 780 to try and get something to the county, and the problem I have with that, and I've studied the documents that are associated with unification, the fiscal analysis, the housing analysis, or facilities analysis, and also the latest feasibility study, and I'm finding a lot of material that's inaccurate or just incomplete. If I look at the feasibility study that the Pleasant Valley School Board was presented a week ago, under the bond expenditures, this guy was supposed to be doing a new feasibility study, but he used numbers reflected from 2002, where it would have been very simple for him to, instead of putting in $880,000, to put in the $7.47 million bond expenditures at Camarillo High School. I've asked questions about the district's revenue limit calculations, specific questions that haven't been answered. My concern is that we're really pushing this to the county before we, as citizens of Camarillo, really have an idea of what we're getting into. A lot of talk about Measure H dollars coming to Camarillo. Those aren't certain. There are some issues that are incorporated with that. There are some issues with, our, the consultant that came to Pleasant Valley School District was asked a specific question about matching funds for building a high school, and the consultant said, well, you might qualify. Well, we all know what a might is. A might is also half of a might not. But this gets spun into, we're going to get matching dollars, and we're going to have all the money in the world to build a new high school, when the reality of it is, the only people that are out there that have said and with clear intention that they're going to build us a high school is Oxnard Union High School District. And I just don't want us to rush into this. 780 works well for the other two districts that it was designed for, and if you look at the Yosemite District, the Merced County portion of this, Yosemite and the district that they're unifying with share a superintendent. This is a small community that, for reasons not associated with funding, not associated with facilities, just associated with, it was easier just to meld these two together. They're already sharing services. So I would ask that you really take a look at this. Is there really a rush to put this in the hands of our county committee maybe in the future? But I think you all know that, you know, Ventura County, if you've been here a while, like I have, some 44 years, tends to be a little incestuous. You know, I'm playing golf in Ojai, and it ends up I'm playing with Mr. Flynn's son. Mrs. Long's son plays with other friends of mine's son, and I'm sure that we all have connections somewhere around. So I would really like to have the objective view come from the state, and that's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you. No further public comment cards? Thank you. I'd like to, if I might, make a few comments, and I said this morning, and this was not the only item that the board pulled up for early discussion, just to say that for the record. I brought this forward because there has been, as was noted, an interest in unification, and efforts to unify, to have a public discussion, a community discussion on unification for years, and it goes back even well before 1999. And I, early on, did not get engaged in that, and what I brought to the board today clearly was to say, this is not to ask for your position for or against unification. This was truly intended to be able to move this issue to the voters, to not be afraid to ask the voters their opinion. And I think that there have been numerous studies and numerous subcommittees that have worked on the issue, and if there still are questions, and I know there are, then they should be asked and they should be answered. But they're not going to be asked and answered if people continue to draw lines in the sand. And for bodies to say they're for or against or they're neutral is not a common table. And one of the things I closed with today, and I closed with last week before the city council, the best thing that could happen for the students and the parents of both of these districts is to get a common table and to ask again for Oxnard Union School District to call for a common table, to sit down with PVSD trustees, you are the elected leaders of both districts for the common good of the students and the parents in this community, and get the questions answered. Do any additional studies that are necessary. You force folks to draw lines in the sand when you resist meeting and talking, and I've asked that, and other people have asked that. I don't think that's asking too much. When you say to do what's best for the public and the students, I cheer. That is exactly what should be done here. I am going to have to make a comment to LULAC's comments and CRLA related to the racial implications or allegations or undertones that are put forward there. I would not, I just think that is disingenuous, again, to the public to make those kinds of statements, and the study that you referred to, I have yet to see it. The study that was just presented to PVSD addresses the racial issues that have been raised and in fact calls to question any comments or analysis that have been prior provided by Dr. Griffin related to the standards adopted by the California Board of the Department of Education. And I'm going to read this because for the public record, I want to say, adopted the standards... And I'm going to read this, because for the public record, I want to say, "Adopted the standard adopted by the California Department of Education, OUHSD and Rio Mesa School already have a disproportionate racial balance, a necessary condition to be deemed a segregated district or school. Because this condition of disproportionate minority population already exists, the unification does not promote this condition of segregation. It already exists." Under the Education Code, again, it does not promote, it already exists. So the issue should be, if it already exists, then what are we fighting over here? What we need to be doing is thinking about what the academic excellence continuum should be in both of these school districts. And if, at the end of the day, from the reorganization county committee, the criteria is met, but the public says, "We still don't agree that the best academic excellence is unifying these districts," then they are smart enough, and I suggest we trust them, to be smart enough to vote yes or no on unification. Yes or no? Instead of throwing up that there's issues related to racial segregation, I just, I think that is so disingenuous, because we are a small community, and we pride ourselves. We just talked about how we work together in collaboration on many issues, and the one that we should be targeting is academic excellence for all the districts, so nobody's on a watch list. And I know that's a very narrow-defined area that the watch list exists for, the Oxnard Elementary and the Oxnard District. I know that. But does the community understand that? And if they understand that, and I'm sure many of them do, then we should be working with you and with LULAC to change that, to improve that. My effort today was really a genuine effort to bring this to a local level, and to ask for people to stop, stop the disingenuous activity and get to a common table and work through these issues and answer the questions, and then trust the voters. And I still will put forward my recommended action for the resolution support of the AB-780 review process. That's my motion.
Second. I'd like to comment just real, real quickly. Couple of things that kind of bother me in some of the testimony, and this happens frequently. People say, "Well, no one knew this was going, this was going to happen, and nobody knew about it." And then somebody gets up and says, "Our office is getting lots of calls on this resolution." Huh? It can't have it both ways. Either people did know about it and put up a fuss because they disagree with the action that might be taken, or they totally didn't know about it, in which case, none of you would have been here. And so, you know, those are the little tiny things that are, you know, disturbing. The other comment that really bothers me is when people say that the state, going to the state level, is not political. And, "Oh, have the state decide?" Oh, right. So both sides can go up and lobby like they always do, the State Board of Education and all the other people, and let somebody who doesn't know our area, and if the numbers are corrected, that there's more appointed members, are any of them from Ventura County? They were actually appointed, active, and ready to go. But at any rate, you can't say that going to a state board, and I don't care which one it is, whether it's the Water Board, the CTC, State Board of Education, all that does is allow one group or the other the ability to lobby outside of the local atmosphere and the local issues and the local control. So I don't, I don't buy the argument of, "Well, let the state decide." You know, let, I don't believe that this bill would have passed and made it possible if a certain number of people didn't believe that it's time to move on, and this is a good, solid process to move on. What I see in efforts like has happened today is an effort to do nothing. By saying, "Well, we'll leave it with the state," well, it could be heard in November. Then again, it could be a year from November. It's an effort to do nothing, to avoid facing the tough conversation and the tough issues locally. And so, I'm going to support this resolution. I still feel that it is the correct. I don't have, I honestly do not have a position on unification. The position I have is that it's time to move this process forward. It's available, and move it. And I believe that Supervisor Long is correct. If there are still these, you know, lines drawn in the sand, it's time to start kicking them out of the sand, undefining them, and everybody get in the same sandbox and start playing, because this decision needs to be made for the good of all of the students.
Supervisor Flynn.
Yeah, I'm going to vote against the motion, but I want to make it clear that when I think of Kathy Long, she is not a racist, she is an integrationist. So anything said by people today that you feel uneasy about, just relieve that, because I think you have a good reputation on that issue. When I campaigned this last time and walked through El Rio and walked every street and talked with a lot of young people, I can remember this one young man saying, "But, man, why do they want to leave?" I think that's something for the adults involved with this to think about. What is it going to do to the psyche of those students at Rio Mesa when the group leaves for Camarillo and no longer attends there? That really bothers me. You know, local control is, to me, is masking the issue. Everyone likes local control. Strom Thurmond, in 1948, ran for President of the United States. He ran on the platform of states' rights, and you know what that masked? And for some people, this is masking this local control. I don't buy it at all. And after listening to Richard Hockes and his comments today, there's a lot of that bill, 780, is it AB-780, that I don't know about. He said the local committee can decide whether or not, am I correct, people in the entire district will be allowed to vote. So that's not a certain. The whole district is going to be affected by this, and I think the entire population of that district, the Oxnard Union High School District, needs to have the opportunity to vote. I want to be able to vote. I live in the district. Are you going to take that right away from me? Is this committee going to take that right away from me? To vote on something that's going to impact the entire district? I want the right to vote.
Okay. Mr. Supervisor Bennett?
Yeah, I think it's, I would find it impossible not to comment after hearing the testimony here today. I think we find ourselves, as a board, in a, what I would call frustrating position for us to be in. And I think that it reminds me of so many other times when, when something starts, we saw it last week, somebody said, "Our intention is not to do this," and then they list some things, and everybody says, "Well, that really is your intention." I think, no matter how many times we say, "I certainly didn't have any intentions with this. This issue just came in front of us to get involved in the Ojai Unified, I mean, in the Ojai Unified, that's where I taught for 25 years, and the Oxnard Union," into this whole dispute from a standpoint of trying to portray one side or the other. So with that, with the fact that we have, for better or for worse, touched the emotion of this issue. We touched it on one side this morning, we're touching it, touched the emotion of this issue here this afternoon. I want to compliment Supervisor Flynn for trying to emphasize that you're not calling Supervisor Long a racist. I think that that's valuable for this board to try to say, although those kinds of allegations will probably fly as this dispute goes forward, that it's, that we're not trying to throw those at each other as we, as we move forward with this. So with that, I just want to emphasize that the reasons that, I just want to emphasize that this should not be portrayed as trying to take a, take a position on whether this should move forward or not, and certainly doesn't, doesn't portray, you know, some of the sentiments that some people will probably try to ascribe to us with this. I certainly cut my teeth getting my administrative credential in a course, and the case study was this unification effort, whether you call it unification, I think they called it splitting away from the district at that time, or whatever you call it at that point in time. And that's a whole, it's a complicated issue, and it's not an appropriate issue for us as the board to be trying to say, take a position on, it's way too complicated for us with that regard. So I won't be changing my vote as a result of that, but I appreciate being able to make these comments. Thank you.
Thank you. So the motion, a second, opposition to the motion?
I have a motion.
Passes 4-1 again. And I thank the board, and I appreciate your comments, and I expect we'll move forward. And I again ask you, implore you, to form a common table to try and work through this for the best of the community. Okay, board members, we will now move to our regular agenda. Item number 20. You still want to go through this? Everybody's hungry?
We're starting.
We got what? I know there are people. I know. Item 25. Mr. Lorenz.
Good afternoon, Chair. Members of the board. Mr. Johnston, this is an authorization for the Health Care Agency to partner with the Cabrillo Economic Development Corporation in their effort to seek housing development funds for agricultural workers in Fillmore. The Health Care Agency is obviously very interested in improving the health of the agricultural worker in our county, and therefore, we ask for your approval to move forward. We will return to your board with the agreement for your approval.
Other questions? Motion, a second. An objection to the motion? Seeing none, so ordered, yes, and congratulations. And I know we received a letter from the City of Fillmore in support of this, and appreciate that. Okay, item 26 was pulled. Item 27, Ventura County Library, approval recommendation from the Library Service Commission. And I invite up our esteemed librarian, Starrett Kreisman.
Well, good afternoon, Madam Chair and board members. I thank you for continuing with the agenda, although I've got to say, I'm feeling a little faint out here. I was here two weeks ago for a study session on the county library system, and at that time, I gave you an overview of the study that was recently conducted, my Management Partners Incorporated. At that time, you also heard about Option 4 of that study, which proposed amending the service area boundaries that are described in the current memorandum of understanding under which the library operates. Option 4 was approved by the Library Services Commission on a vote of 4 to 3. The cities of Fillmore, Ojai, Port Juaniemi, and the county were in favor, while the cities of Camarillo, Moore Park, and Ventura were opposed. The representative from the city of Simi Valley was not able to be there that night, but that city council had previously approved Option 4. The memorandum of understanding says that the board may amend service area boundaries upon a recommendation of the Library Services Commission. In asking you to adopt Option 4, that is what is being requested. I've mentioned before, and I want to continue to emphasize, that adopting this option does not completely wipe out the library's existing deficits. It's not a cure-all. It does have the advantage of giving the Library Services Commission, some say, over the library system as a whole. By giving the commission some discretion and flexibility, it was hoped that existing service-level inequities could be addressed over time, with an eye toward giving all areas of the system at least some minimal level of service. As a result of the current formula-driven system, the commission does not have the option of improving the efficiency of the overall system, nor prioritizing service delivery on any kind of rational, regional basis. County libraries are labeled free libraries in the state education code, and this is the essence of what they are and what they do. They are meant to provide a measure of equitable library service over what may be very broad geographic areas. A recent geographic information system study of the issuance of library cards in the Ventura County Library System revealed that people who live in one city do not necessarily use the library in that city, nor do the people who live in the unincorporated areas surrounding cities necessarily use that city library, although there is a tendency. People are not confined by jurisdictional lines and may in fact use multiple libraries. Other studies have shown that people use libraries where they work, where they shop, and where they have daycare for their children. In accordance with the MOU, the recommendation of the commission has been placed on your agenda. The commission's recommendation proposes the amendment of service area boundaries so that the service areas of six participating cities are made coextensive with city boundaries. The eighth service area would comprise the entirety of the unincorporated area. The city of Camarillo is an exception. That city retained the boundaries of the unincorporated area due to a waiver given by the commission, the Library Services Commission, because of the Bond Act project currently underway in that city, the new library that's being built. Option 4 is not a cure for the library system's finances, but it is a helpful incremental
Other questions of staff at this time? We have two public cards to speak on this item. No questions of staff? The very patient Murray Rosenbluth. Mr. Mayor, welcome. City of Port Juaniemi.
I certainly admire your fortitude. Without much. Chair Long, Honorable Supervisors, Mr. Johnston, I bring you greetings from the City of Port Juaniemi. As you well know, although you may not have recognized me with a new beard, I'm Murray Rosenbluth.
You're very handsome, Murray. Give me your new look.
Thank you, Johnny. I'm the mayor of Port Juaniemi, and I represent Port Juaniemi as a library commissioner, past chair, and founding member of the Ventura County Library Commission. I worked closely initially with the Honorable Frank Shillow, who was the first chair of the commission. In fact, I'm wearing his tie. Maybe you'll recognize that. I support Option 4 of the study. I urge you to approve and adopt Option 4 as discussed and recommended by the Ventura County Library Director, Starrett Kreisman. I prepared a whole bunch of stuff here, but Starrett said it all. There's no reason for me to take more time and repeat the whole story again, because she's absolutely right. I participated in the development and review of the study with some pretty sharp questions of our consultants, and I'm satisfied that the result is the right one, that we've got the right answer. But we must realize, as Starrett said, that although this is an important step forward of necessity, it's a small step, because it does not solve the problem of inadequate total system revenue. I don't have a recommendation to solve that, but it's something we need to keep facing. We are the most underfunded county in the library compared to the, to the level of resources in the county, the level of wealth in the county. Spending per student on libraries approaches shameful when you look at the overall statistic. Several years ago, we ran a study in Port Juaniemi, a survey within the city limits to gauge support for a modest library parcel tax amounting to about five cents a day. The result was not promising, and so we were unable to bring that forward. But getting back to what's on our plate today, consideration of operation of Option 4. Previously, the Port Juaniemi City Council unanimously adopted this option, even though we would no longer directly control about 55 percent of our present library revenue. We were willing to turn over control of 55 percent of the present library revenue to the county, to the County Library Commission, and then in turn, to the Board of Supervisors. This is the largest percent reduction of the seven cities in the system. By comparison, there's considerably less impact on the other cities. For example, the several cities who voted against it, namely, Moore Park and Ventura, their impact level is about 12 percent. their impact level is about 12%. Quite a difference there, isn't there? And so I think that our action, despite the impact on us, speaks for itself as something that we believe in our diverse council, and as you know, we're diverse in many ways, you could unanimously agree on. You know, I believe that a viable free public library is a hallmark of civilization, and I certainly urge you respectfully to join us and adopt option four. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Jerry Bangston, City Manager, City of Camarillo. Also extraordinarily patient.
Thank you. Not as much as you are, I must say. And I commend you for your strong desire to stay with public input as the real crux of every decision that you do make. If I might, I'm actually approaching you a little uncertain as to what to in fact recommend or bring for the consideration of this board. Our city did in fact consider option four, and it is one of the three noted as being opposed to option four. Our opposition, however, was one couched in the form of questions. Option four had four elements to it. The council said if we could get clarification on this item, if we could get additional information on this item, then we could be in a position to maybe favor it. We are part of the county's system. We would like to share in making that system one that we could all be proud of. We have some real genuine procedural questions as to the action that is before the board, and on that point, I would be asking that you consider a continuance. One, the staff report refers to a May study. I am presuming that to be the April 29 study, but the study that was presented to our council was June, so I'm really a little unclear as to what the May study is. Secondly, at least in the mind of the City of Camarillo's Commissioner, the action that the commission took in February was not presented as a recommendation to be brought forward to the board. There had been discussions as early as four and five months before, based upon staff information, which is now at least in question, as to whether or not the memorandum of understanding would require a unanimous vote of all members, and the county is in fact one of those signatories, to the MOU. One city noted as being opposed, the city of Ventura, it was the representative who voted no, not having taken it to his council, but at least at the meeting indicated, and in fact, the entire commission had previously discussed whether there was even any relevance to taking a vote because of the requirement of unanimity. When Moore Park, three months before, had said they opposed, there was discussion of it being dead. Now we find that it is before this body, and it is being presented as a recommendation of the commission. And I would encourage you to delay action, to give the commission an opportunity to actually vote and bring it back under the process as a clear recommendation in keeping with the MOU. I don't believe the vote will be different, but it certainly will address for us the issue of how a memorandum of understanding presumed from 1998 to require unanimity is now being presented as a three-four to the board. The other issue is one of the reference to service area. We are quite honestly a little befuddled, and maybe it's more of a question. It's one that however has been asked and asked and asked. Why change the boundaries to the areas of interest? We're looking at a library, and what area is being served from that library? LAFCO's criteria for the establishment of areas of interest is totally different than that which would apply to determine the area of service and the area of impact. We would also question why a Los Poses area of interest, when clearly that is an area served by the Camarillo library. And to say it will be, I believe the term was, actually I forgot what the term was. The exception, I guess, was what was referred to, leaves that at the discretion of the Board of Supervisors apparently, to change at any given point in time. If we're putting together an operational budget, it's important that we know what those revenues are. It has, by most of my peers, every time I bring this issue up, as being a little disingenuous on our part because of where we are in the surplus. Quite honestly, and I mean this in all sincerity, the issue is not the surplus that we have. It is the surplus we will no longer have after an action by our city council tomorrow night, when we award the contracts for a library that is 25% larger than our community's needs. But in order to handle the 26% of our service area that is in the unincorporated, the county has not been asked to contribute any funds. The city will be subsidizing the new library in excess of $1 million per year. And the day before that action goes to our council, this board will eliminate half of the current surplus and reallocate. Secondly, I was a part of the Orange County dilemma a number of years ago. Formula-based, that was referred to in our system, is I believe a misstatement. Our system simply says money generated stays in the area. That's not really formula-based. Formula-based is where you bring all the libraries to an equal playing field. You take into account circulation, you take into account population, you take into account revenue generated. We have a surplus because we only have 3,000 square feet of library more than Port Wainimi. And yet we serve five times the number in population. If we were meeting our service demands, there would be no surplus. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bangston. There are no further public comments on this item. I'd like to ask the Director.
Not to try and address everything certainly raised by Mr. Bangston, but those that you might, I don't know if you're prepared to do so, related to his question on the time of the study.
That one I'm a little confused about, and I'll have to go back and look, I'm sorry. My understanding was that we, it was the June draft, but we went through several drafts, and things didn't, some of them didn't change that much, so I want to be very clear about that. I have to go back and look.
Okay. Are there other questions for Starek? Response to this Supervisor Michael's?
Yeah, the reference to the fact that Moore Park, months ago, had made the comment they wouldn't support any change, is it not true that Moore Park is right now looking at withdrawing from the entire system in order to do, and only looking, I'm not saying there's any action, but they are exploring the possibility of partnering with Ventura Community College District, Moore Park College, in providing library services, correct?
That's my understanding, is that that city is looking at a partnership with the Community College, Moore Park Community College, and the Unified School District there.
Well, I have a little problem with invoking their name as, you know, I mean, they're not planning on playing anyway, much longer, if they can get these other agreements. They may not, and I understand that, they may ultimately decide to stay with the system, but I think it needs to be very clear that they do not intend to stay with the system. And so that, or at least they are exploring not staying with the system. And a couple of their council members have made it very clear that they prefer to go with the Unified School District and the Community College, Moore Park College, in a partnership for library services and get out of the county. So, you know, I would hope that we look at the overall best for, I guess, what would be left, and await the ultimate decision that they make, which only they can make, it's their community. But I don't want, I don't want anybody making a decision on the fact that they don't, they don't support option four, because they don't support the whole system.
Other questions? Mr. Johnston?
One, I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting today that we have a request from Dan Singer, who chairs the Ventura County Managers Association, and on Thursday they were going to discuss the topic. It's been a continuing subject for I don't know how long, a couple of years, I guess. And so the request said that he wondered if the discussion could be, or the subject could be postponed until after the city managers met. In speaking with the county council's office, I understood there may be some problem with the delay, and then based on Mr. Bangston's comments about whether or not we have a recommendation for, from the library commission, a legal recommendation, isn't that what kind of triggers times and so on? I'm wondering what, is there clarification on that?
Could I just comment on one part of that? The staff report to the library commission concerning this item did state that it would go on to the Board of Supervisors.
And it was a recommendation from them?
Oh, I understood it to be, to be so.
I did too, from the commission work, I did.
And that triggers some kind of time-sensitive?
My understanding is it triggers a 45-day thing that we're up against right now, right?
Right.
Madam Chair, there is a provision in paragraph six of the memorandum of understanding. It says, and I quote, "All commission recommendations shall be placed on the Board of Supervisors' agenda within 45 calendar days from the date of the commission's action."
What was the date of the action?
February 3rd.
February.
I appreciate the issues and comments raised by our city manager, and the city council of Camarillo's done an outstanding job in trying to move forward with a library of the 21st century. And they are tomorrow night going to make a significant commitment, both in funding and working through the operational side of the new library, going from, to a 60,000, 5,000 square foot library from what is a, what is it now?
16,000.
16,000. And the support on option four, which was put forward by the commission, clearly gave Camarillo protection in the sense of the unincorporated area, in the service area, for the return to source revenues, to still be a part of that because of the bond, the grant that the city went after, that the library director was very engaged in, and the community was very engaged in. So, and I thought that frankly, the commission as a whole, as a body, was, it was the right thing to do, but it was also generous to do so. The other issues raised by Mr. Bangston today, I would like to say that this is not the, this is not the final solution in the sense of what is still needed for the total operations of our library regional system for all the parties who are part of that commission system, and that it certainly, we should bring this discussion back to that commission pending the board's action today that would continue to explore, and if necessary, bring back amendments or amended actions, even from the action that the commissions have already individually, as members, have acted on and gone through. I, pardon me? Oh, I thought I heard something in this ear.
Scrubbling stomachs.
I know, it's scrubbling stomachs. So that's my comments. It's awkward. Mr. Bangston and I agree 99% of the time on most things. We work very well together. It's unfortunate that the timing of this is such, so tight that in order to support what I feel has been a commission discussion since October, July?
A year, a year ago.
A year ago, October. And is now brought to us for a vote up or down to delay that, and to say that I think the other issues raised can still be discussed, and amendments could certainly be brought back. But other questions? Ms. Parks?
I was just going to comment, I can wait. The comment was just, as I understand it, they're not going to change their vote. They knew what they were voting for, so I don't know what the effect of the continuation would be, but it seems that this MOU that was created at the time was wonderful, but as it turns out, we find out that it was, you know, it provides inconsistent and unsteady revenue source for it, and we have seen this inequality occur that has to be remedied. So I certainly can support the recommendation of the commission.
Is that a motion?
Only if you want, I'll be happy to make the motion, which is to support the recommendation from the Library Service Commission to adopt option four.
Second. So motion and a second. Any further discussion or questions or concerns? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So ordered. We'll take this back to the commission, though, and have further discussion, I would hope, on issues raised. Thank you so much. Oh, I know we're fading here, I'm sorry. Item 28, approve the request of Ventura County Resource Conservation District to appoint.
So moved.
Motion and a second. An objection to that? Seeing none, so ordered. Thank you for that excellent report, sir.
Yes. Best one we've had all day.
Item 29. Item 29, General Services, agreement regarding cancellation of lease for Seoul Golf Course, Seoul Park Golf Course.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board.
Good afternoon, Mr. Ruffin.
We're asking for authorization to enter into an agreement to cancel the lease at Seoul Golf Course and mutual release of all claims. We've worked very closely with county council to develop the agreement that's in front of you, and we've had several discussions with the county executive office, and we're recommending the board approval of the recommendations. Any questions?
As I understand, this is a request actually from the, from Daley to be released of the lease, is that correct?
That's correct. The Daleys gave us notification on March 4th that they were canceling the lease.
And the county then will run the course until another lessee is found, so it won't disturb the course from being operated?
We will be keeping the course open. Tomorrow, we're having an interim operator manage the course on our behalf. And the interim operator will manage the day-to-day activities, plus help us get started on the repair and restoration projects that need to be done. It's been two months since the damage occurred, and we need to get out there and start repairing irrigation system and other facilities.
Thank you.
Madam Chair? Yes.
Clarification on fiscal impact, if you can. My staff had been in communication with your office, and there was a comment about $250,000 in county cost.
Yes. The document in front of you is an item that needs board approval for us to enter into the agreement and to have the mutual release. There are also some other activities that are occurring to fully resolve all the obligations between the lessee and the county. Some of those could be handled at the staff level, and what the honor controller was speaking of is that there is a side agreement whereby the county, through the lease, has determined what we want to acquire of personal property from the Daleys. So that would be, for example, their landscape equipment, the items that they have in the restaurants, what they have in their pro shop, and so forth. And what we did to develop the cost for that was to bring in some outside experts to help us evaluate the cost. Our procurement staff also went up there to evaluate it, and we determined how much was the value of what we were getting from the Daleys, and offset it by obligations that were due to the county, such things as a were due to the county, such things as gift certificates and things of that nature. And by that, the purchasing department is authorized to purchase the items.
Other questions? Does that answer that?
Thank you.
Yes?
Move approval. Second, give me a quick update on what the irrigation plan is. I mean, unfortunately, I was hoping we were going to get another, another good rain, and I don't know whether we are or not with this nice.
We see that as the key problem at this point in time, and so the Highlands Goth is the company that will be the interim operator, and they were up there last week, and they're going to be up there again tomorrow identifying how to get the current system back in service. We recognize that because of where that place is situated, we need to be concerned about losing the greens and the fairways if we don't have the irrigation system working. So it's number-one priority. We're expecting to have some plans the end of this week or first of next week.
Could you let me know when this comes in?
I will keep you posted.
Yes, sir.
So motion and a second. An objection to the motion? Seeing none, so ordered. Thank you. Thank you for your patience, too. Item 32, recommendation, Supervisor Parks.
Item 32 is yours.
32 is yours.
I'm still on 31. Thank you. I would move the recommendation to appoint, reappoint Suzanne Duckett to the AIDS Advisory Committee.
Second.
Motion and a second, seeing no objection, so ordered. Public Works Agenda 33, 34, 35.
Chair, members of the board, Mr. Johnston, reporting back as required in your ordinance to give you the status on the emergency contracts that I've directed to proceed with without going out to bid. I've got the tabulations in this report. Report is same as all the others have been, and we need to continue this work, is my recommendation, and not go to bid on these projects as yet.
Move approval of item 33.
Motion and a second. Any objection to that motion? Hearing none, so ordered.
Move approval of item 34.
Motion on 34, second on 34. Any objection to the motion? Seeing none, so ordered. 35.
Move approval of item 35.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any objection to the motion? Seeing none, so ordered. Thank you so much.
The only comment I have on any of those is I'll be glad when we kind of get to the end of the tunnel and started.
So will we.
Yes, I know you will.
And still, keep up the good work. Doing a great job out there. Correspondents' Agenda.
Moved, receiving, file.
Motion and a second, receiving, file, seeing no objection, because we're hungry, so ordered, and we're going into closed session at five minutes of two. Will there be an announcement?
No.
Then we will adjourn from closed session, and we will have our special meeting this evening at 6:30 in Fillmore.
Oh, so it is an adjournment to a special meeting.